...of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee to order at 6:31 PM. Do notice having been posted, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions may be made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present. Roll call of members present. Mr. Pierce?
Here.
Mrs. Field?
Here.
Mr. Machado?
Here.
Mr. McDonald?
Here.
The chair is here. Mrs. Gagliardi and Mr. Giliducci have prior engagements and will not be joining us this evening. Also with us this evening are the superintendent of schools, Mr. Jeffrey Schoonover; the director of business and finance, Mr. Ronald Taro; the principal of the high school, Mr. Lanzinski; recording secretary, Robin Vicaro. If I could please ask everyone to now rise. Am I missing someone?
Curriculum director.
Oh. The director of curriculum, Mrs. Elizabeth Haskell. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next meeting, regularly scheduled meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School School Committee, will be on Thursday, November fourteenth, at 6:30 PM at the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School Library. Under the agenda, first item under student achievement, teaching and learning, is a presentation by Joshua Rigo, automotive design award recipient. Mr. Rigo?
Alright, so, this is the model I made while I was in Detroit at College of Creative Studies, at a summer camp, that I won a scholarship to go to, and I brought with me here two, the drawings that I made to get into the competition. So, I found out about the competition by, while I was researching colleges that I was interested in and wanted to go to, I found this college, College of Creative Studies, and I found they had a transportation design major. So, when I went under it, I saw that they had a competition called the Dunlop Philos and Scholars Competition. So, I thought, why not, I'll try to enter it. So, I read all the, all things they're gonna do for it, and one of the main thing I had to make was three views of an original car design. So, I made these three drawings. These drawings took me about a month to make, and after I finished them, I submitted them in, not really thinking too much, because as far as I knew, at least a couple hundred kids were entering, it's from all around the country. So, I didn't really think I had the best chances of winning, but I thought, I might as well try my hardest to win. And in May, May first, I found out that I was one of the winners, so I was really excited about that. And I ended up being able to go into the summer camp. So, during the summer camp, it was three weeks long, and I was able to live in a college dorm, a real college dorm, with three other roommates from around the country, and it would be like a really good college experience. And I was just there with my family, in another state, I'm in that for three weeks. So, I thought it was a really good experience. And I also get three college credits, three full college credits from those two, so I already have my class done for college.
I had the opportunity to talk to Josh real quickly. Would you, would you let the committee know how you made your model?
Yeah, sure. So, the way it's made is that there's a wood base on the bottom that we cut to the size needed, and then we took a big block of foam and carved the foam to wherever the shape was. For this instance, as being a truck, I had to carve up a whole big piece of the back for the bed space. And this part, this hole right here was the hardest part to do too, because I had to, there's no foam here, it's all clay, so I had to support it, it's all easy clay. And this in total took about a week only to make. So, yeah, and then after you have the foam, it looked almost like an egg shape, we kept that foam shape done, then you put all the layers of clay on to get the correct shape, all the little details on it.
Josh, two questions. Would that be gas power?
This one actually would be electric power.
And number two, what would it cost in the open market?
Um, I haven't really gone that far in the design, only the visual looks of it, but probably, because the wheelbase of this car is about the size of Ford Fiesta, so it's a pretty small car, so it'd probably be around thirty, forty thousand dollars for this car.
How many students were in the program?
So, in the class I was in, it was fifteen total winners from around the country, and I'm now in the second part of the competition, currently competing in, and I have to send in a portfolio, like a full art portfolio to give to the college. And once I am accepted to the college, they select one, one recipient from this competition, and that one person is a full ride through to the college.
Well, congratulations, being one of fifteen across the country to be accepted into the program. Were there any other students from Massachusetts that you were with?
No, I was in Massachusetts. The closest student to me was in New York City.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
They, how many students submitted drawings?
Um, I wasn't given an exact number, but I was told, I was told that it was a very, very tight competition, it was most likely around five hundred students.
Wow. Okay.
What's next?
Next, hopefully...
Just for you, you can now, raise yourself next fall.
If everything goes well, and I do get a scholarship through this college, hopefully I will be going to college in Detroit to do, to get, to learn a major in car design. But if that doesn't go well, I'm also very, I'm also very interested in engineering design, so if I don't get into this college, or I don't get a substantial scholarship, I'd most likely go to college for robotics engineering, and a school nearby.
Any other questions or comments? That's a pretty amazing design. I am confident that not one of us could do anything for that, so, very impressive. Thank you so much for sharing those with us this evening.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is student representative report.
Hello, everyone. I'm Janie Solvia, I'm the senior class president. So, in our school, we recently just had elections, so this is the first time I've been on these meetings, so, but, right now, we have going on in the music department, if you guys came in through the student parking lot, there's a concert going on tonight. Also, the case rally is starting to take off, so after this meeting, I'll be going to one of those meetings, along with some of my fellow classmates. Also, with the case rally, most of the grades have already started practices, so we're starting the meetings tonight, we're gonna pick a topic, and then we're gonna go off with that. Also, the other day, while the juniors were taking PSATs, the freshmen and the seniors were in credit for life, so that was about, we picked a career that we were interested in, and we took that, and we went through the gym, and we went through each of the certain stations, and one was housing, one was insurance, one was food and nutrition, the other were luxury items, which would include like going out to eat, getting your nails done, et cetera. So, that was really an eye-opening experience for realizing, like, I can't afford everything I want right out of college, so I'm gonna have to figure stuff out.
Did you like that, Janie, the credit for life?
Yeah, I liked it. I thought it was, like, some kids thought it was dumb, but I actually think it was, like, realistic, and it's starting to get you ready to think about bills you're gonna have to pay, that your parents probably paid for you now, so it was especially good for me.
At the end of the month, you had money left over after you paid your bills?
Yes, so you could pick your career, so I wanted to, I'm just, when I'm older, so I just picked something in the medical field, because there was only a limited list. So, I picked a pharmacist, so I could just see, like, around the same salary, and I ended up having three thousand extra a month, so I put some of that away in savings and retirement, there was also another session for that. So, it was the retirement and the savings, so that was really eye-opening as well, because it start, like, if you start saving now, then you won't have to worry about working until you're sixty-five, so that was good. Also, with sports, most of our teams are doing very well. I know the field hockey team is undefeated as well, we're qualified for tournament. Soccer team's also qualified for tournament recently. The cross-country team as well is undefeated, they're going into the state tournament. Yeah, and the music department, I know the band's doing very well, too. They recently won the championship, I believe, in one of their competitions. I'm not very key into that right now, I haven't really talked to the music department yet, but I know that they're doing well with that, too. Does anyone have any questions?
You can't give away what you're doing for case rally, right?
We don't know yet. We're on the air, too. It's good.
Thank you.
No problem.
I think you're trying to get her in trouble. Also, under our student representative report, under item number two, Grace is here this evening from Berkeley to provide a Berkeley report.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. My name's Grace Sedell. I'm a former Berkeley Community School, Berkeley Middle School alum, and so I'm here to kind of give the principal reports of what's going on in the Berkeley community, so you can kind of get a little in-touch experience there, see what's going on. If you have any, like, little kiddos, you know, you can see, like, what's happening. So, at the community school, to start off, this year, the focus for our staff and students is school values, which are responsibility, respectfulness, and safeness. We have been focusing heavily on teaching routines of our classrooms and school common areas to all learners. We just hired a new school nurse and a new school psychologist, which I was, when I was at the school, we didn't have a school psychologist, so I think it's pretty cool that we're getting some new people to our team, day by day, in our small little town. Berkeley Community School staff participated in a district offered professional development this, this summer. It's called creating a positive environment for all students, taught by Director Carolyn McKeerney, I believe, from South Coast Educational Collaborative. This course identified a host of strategies and understandings designed to assist all children in meeting success at school. So, this summer, at the community school, we also hosted a lot of events. We had a kindergarten picnic, in which everyone enjoyed the chance to eat lunch, and had some treats, and meet their principal, vice principal, and the new teachers, so get that kind of, like, kind of their foot in the door before they really get fully into kindergarten, and leaving their parents for a little while longer than usual. They also hosted a book swap to support the summer reading challenge that they had over the summer. The PTO had their first meeting on Wednesday, September eleventh, and they kicked off their first fundraiser on Friday, the thirteenth. And their annual curriculum night for parents is held on Thursday, September nineteenth. It was a wonderful opportunity for teachers to share information about year-long expectations, and all parents were encouraged to attend, and a lot did. Now, onto the middle school. So, in middle school news, basically, our staff's first-day focuses were to, like, really think about motivation, inspiration, identifying, like, how we want students to make our mark in the small community. We were also excited to be piling honors-level class in each content area. When I went to Berkeley a couple of years ago, it was only, they had honors level in one class, and that was math, and so we really expanded our education levels on that, and now offering that in all content levels. And so, students qualify for this based on their grade seven, M V, or GPA in all areas, and combining that with their twenty nineteen MCAS scores. So, this really helps them, for when they go to the high school, they have a little bit more knowledge, and they're kind of like a little bit step ahead, just like the Somerset kids, which is great. Our PTO also met in early October to get things ready for the new school year, although they have already hit the ground running, which, like I mentioned before, they were, everyone's welcome to attend, if you're ever interested, and want to get into that Berkeley community. So, every meeting's held the second Thursday of most months, at six-thirty PM in the main office, starting in October. We also held our fourth annual color run on September twenty-sixth, and so that was from twelve-thirty to two, it was a great day, in our Berkeley Middle School backfields. The administrative team went over school, district, district and school policies with all the staff. During the week of September ninth, they held their annual welcome back meeting for each grade level. Our goal for this is to personalize each message to a grade, you know, make them all feel special, highlight the importance and the significance of the year ahead, and help identify goals that they have for the each coming year. We continue to highlight and teach throughout the year to staff at the middle school. Their core values of respect are, their core values are respect, responsibility, optimism, and kindness, and we want to put this into not only our daily lives, but also into the future. And lastly, our theater program at the middle school, our, their first meeting was held Wednesday, September eleventh as well, and Berkeley, Somerset Berkeley students now are like, who were from Berkeley before, are like working backwards to like help the kids who are part, who are part of the music department here. So, students Delaney Wilson and Cruz Whiting are helping produce the show this year. They are students at this school, and they're using their musical abilities that they've learned at Somerset Berkeley, and giving it to the younger students to kind of get them excited and inspired, or to join the music community once they get to Somerset Berkeley. And that is all I have for today. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Any questions or comments from the group? Thank you very much, appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Item number three, under student achievement, teaching and learning, is DECA introductions. Advisor, Mrs. McRae, and officers. Welcome to the meeting.
My name is Rory McCoom. I got the opportunity to introduce myself last year, but I'm excited to be back. There are several things that we're looking forward to this year. I'm currently the co-president of DECA. Last year, I was the vice president, and I'm a three-year member, so I believe strongly in this, and I'm really excited to get started this year. We have hit the ground running, and there are a plethora of exciting things that we'd like to speak to you about today. Put your mind. Thank you. Okay, so the first big announcement, the one that I'm most excited about, is our new advisor here, Mrs. McRae.
Hi, nice to meet you. I'm very excited, very excited to be here, and even more so because these kids are awesome. They are all about DECA, music DECA, music DECA. That seems to be like the main focus here, and it's great. So, we're hoping to have some good collaborations with different departments, and different fundraising experiences and things like that, and community service. We're hoping we can grab some of those hours our way, too, to help out, so we're, we're excited, yeah. This is my second year with DECA, my first year here, as the, one of the business teachers doing marketing is my favorite, so, yeah.
Okay, so, as always, we have a new membership, right? Our seniors have left sadly, we can't keep them forever, and actually, some of them, that's not so bad, right? But we also made a big change, we also made a big change. We're now allowing freshmen in for the first time ever, and I'm really excited about this. My sister's actually a freshman, and she's really nervous. She's joining, but I think that it's gonna be great to get to work with them, so that as they go on through high school, they'll be ready to themselves in a year. It's not their first experience with these kind of things. DECA's great, it helps you so much in, in all kinds of professional situations, public speaking skills, communication, all of this. So, the fact that we're bringing them in early, and kind of molding them, I think that's gonna be great, and I think that it's really a long-term investment. When she's here for her fourth year, she'll have students that have been a part of this program, and they, they'll certainly bring their friends in, they'll bring their friends on board, so this is really a good opportunity for us to grow, and to do something that we have never done before. The next new thing that I'm excited about, we've got new standards, we've got new plans. We want to find that balance between fun, because this is a club, and we want kids to enjoy themselves truly, right? But we also want to push people to exceed, we want to have optimal success. There are several things that we're doing to try and motivate kids, and incentivize them to practice more, to study more, so that when we go to our first competition in Mansfield at the district level, they're ready to go, and we're, we're competing at the top of our game. We're all, we already have, we do such a great job, I mean, really. But, but I think that, that there are ways to, to increase the level of competition between students here at this school, so that they're really with their friends, lifting each other up, right? They, they want to succeed, they want to move on to the next level at Boston, it's what it's all about, I'm really excited. When it comes to new plans, there's too many to talk about. I'll keep it brief, but my, the one that I'm most excited about, I'd like to include everyone on the school committee. Our mock competition, we did this last year, Mr. Schoonover, you were a part of this, Mr. Lanzinski was a part of this, and several of you were actually a part of it, but the mock competition is great, because it inserts these students into what they're going to be doing at the competition. They're wearing their full business attire, and they're actually sitting down with someone that they've never met before, and they're forced to really, you know, break open that shell, you know, it's, it's a new experience for them, and so we're going to be doing that twice this year, and we're going to be doing that before we go to states. So, everyone's gonna have that experience, and everyone, unlike last year, is gonna be able to do that before they go to the, to the more highly competitive levels. We can go on. I'd like to just include this information, because it's important off the bat. January eighth and ninth is our first competition. We do not yet know what types of competitors we'll be competing on each day, but we know that most likely on the eighth, a majority of the students will be leaving the school on this day, because I think that this is going to be the day where we have, usually it's teams that go first, and a majority of our students do compete as team members. So, the eighth and the ninth are our first competitive days, the twenty-seventh and the twenty-ninth, this is the state competition in Boston, that's been moved up, this is earlier than it was last year, and then ICDC is the exact same days, the twenty-ninth to the second in Nashville, Tennessee this year, which we're really excited about. Last year, it was in Orlando, and it was an incredible experience, I got to go, and I really, really learned so much from this, but I'm, I'm excited for the international competition this year. We can go on. So, this is something new that we'd like to talk to you about today. They're called power trips, and this is something that we haven't done before at the high school. It's, it's an opportunity that DECA provides, and what it is, is an opportunity for the officers and the advisors to experience workshops. This year, there are several, one in Minneapolis, one in Washington DC, one in New York, and one in San Diego, but the one that we're looking at is Washington DC, from the fifteenth to the seventeenth. So, what we're looking at is the advisor development conference, and do you want to speak a little to that, with what?
Yeah, basically, what we've, I reached out to Karen, Donna, rather, McFadden, and she's head of DECA from Massachusetts, like, the big, big advisor, if you will, and she said it's a huge opportunity for, for me, especially where it's only my second year as a DECA advisor. There are classes, like, eight hours a day, that I'll be able to attend, that speak to growing the, growing the organization, speak to getting more community involvement with the kids, and different ways to be able to do that, and then also, they have the courses for the kids as well.
So, what we're looking at, we get to choose, when it comes to the officers, I along with Maisy McGonagall, the co-presidents, and then JC Tessier and Emma Madeiras are the vice presidents. I think this will be best, if I'm being honest, for the vice presidents, because what they're going to do is go to these conferences in DC, and they're going to learn, and then next year, when they fill our roles, hopefully they'll be able to use that knowledge to work things out in a way where we're doing better all around. So, the innovations and entrepreneurship conferences, the conference that we think would be most beneficial, I've, we've been reading about this, and, and like she said, these are like very long days where we get to sit down through these conferences, which I'm actually excited about, because there's a similar conference at the international competition, but if you compete at the international competitions, you don't have the time to attend them.
Yeah.
So, we're really looking forward to this, and we've never done it before, but I think it's gonna be good all around if we do actually have the opportunity to go. Okay, so, when it comes to this, this is an example that we want to provide with all of you. Last year, we tried for the first time, written projects, this is a form of competition that we had never experienced before as a high school. Written projects, you go in to a DECA competition, fully prepared, knowing what you're going to say, you've, you've been working on it all year, right? So, I along with my two partners here, I'll hand it over to them so that they can speak about this, but we've been, we started even before the school year started, working on our project, and we're really excited about this, and we, we want to make sure that we inform you as to what we're doing, because we think that this could really be beneficial here at our school.
So, with the pollution prevention club that we've created within our town, and within DECA, what we're looking to do is address the topic that everyone is aware of, because everyone knows that pollution is a drastic issue in our environment. As I've seen, plastic bottles in this room, I know everyone likes to use plastic wrap, plastic bags, Ziploc bags, these are all forms of plastic, that once they're used once, they can end up on the streets. I know taking walks sometimes throughout the parking lot, the school to my car, I see plastic littered across the driveway, the pavement, all that. So, what we're looking to do is to clean that up, and to try to address this issue with our town, our people, person by person, hand by hand, because some of the stats that we can throw at you, there's plenty of them that we can do, we're not trying to overwhelm you, but there are three hundred billion pounds of plastic in our oceans. So, when you take that number, and you look at the fact that oceans cover two-thirds of our earth, you see that sixty-seven percent of our earth, and you can fit forty-six thousand pounds per square mile of our earth with pollution, that's quite overwhelming. And you look at what marine animals are doing over time, and you see that, the turtles, the sea of the turtles is what we're kind of looking at now in our environment, and you see that, and all the birds swooping in, thinking they're catching fish, and they're eating all these plastics. That gets ingested into their system, and then they slowly deteriorate over time, that causes a long tragic death within their systems. So, that's not fair, because that ruins ecosystems, that ruins food chains, until all of our earth begins to crumble down, piece by piece. And one more statistic I just want to throw at you is that, plastic bags are kind of the big thing with us nowadays. When you go to the grocery store, you go to the supermarket, you see all those plastic bags that you put your bags into. Families use about fifteen per trip there, and when you count all the bags used per person per year, it comes to about five-point-five billion. That is enough to circumnavigate the earth four-thousand-two-hundred times, if they are tied together. That can cross the earth four-thousand-two-hundred times. That is too much, I think, and that is why, when you see all of that being put back into the environment, Massachusetts is doing a great thing. They put into effect a ban on certain plastic bags, and a lot of our counties, over fifty percent, have cooperated. Bristol County is home to twenty-three towns, four of them have cooperated with that law. Dartmouth, Attleboro, North Attleboro, and Mansfield. Nowhere in the premises of Somerset and Berkeley does that fall into effect, which is what we're trying to enact here.
And we're aware that there is a lot of debate when it comes to climate change. There's some people that believe there's climate change on earth, there's some people that don't, but with plastic pollution, I mean, just looking at these statistics, it's really something that you can't argue. If you were to go out into the student parking, parking lot after this meeting and just look around, it is absolutely littered with plastic and trash, and it is honestly quite sad, because we are taking from this earth, we are using it to better ourselves and our environment, but we are doing nothing to put it back. I'm a fisherman, I surf, I use the ocean a lot. When I'm in the ocean, I'm just sitting there on my surfboard, and there are literally bags in plastic that are just floating past me, while there's fish swimming right underneath me. That is quite, that's really embarrassing, as a community that we're allowing that to happen. So, in order to give back to our community, it's only right if we take an initiative to spread awareness and really address this issue before it gets too late.
When it comes to like, so, so basically, what, what is great about DECA is we're, we have the opportunity to do this all year and work on this, and what we're doing is starting a nonprofit organization called the Pollution Prevention Coalition. And essentially, what we did first was meet with Mr. Lanzinski, and he was very helpful. We are starting a club here, and we are hoping that this is the first school to, to essentially fall, we're the first club to, to join our coalition, per se, and our philosophy is that, like, like we stated with the bans on plastic bags, our philosophy is that it doesn't necessarily have to be forceful, because we're gonna work hard to, to work just within our two towns of Somerset and Berkeley, to try and convince people, one-on-one, one person at a time, we're gonna go out, spend a day outside a Stop &amp; Shop, and we're gonna talk to people and say, look, this is a clear problem. We're not talking about global warming or climate change, because we're, we're gonna focus on, we, we want to focus our sole attention on this issue, as not to divide people or polarize people. We want to make some, make it very clear that this is a problem that we have, no one can deny it. We live in very nice communities, but even still, this, you can't go for a ride without seeing on each of your sides, streets littered with plastic, and we should be ashamed to live in a community like that. We should do everything that we can to try and prevent that, and what we've seen is that kids agree with us here. In just two weeks, we're really excited to say this, seventy kids have already joined the club, and they're, we had our first meeting today, and everyone's really excited, they all have different insights as to what they want to do, and different ideas about how we can change this, and how we can change that, and I think that, that overall, we're very optimistic about what we can do.
And you know, this isn't just about recycling or eliminating the use of plastic, it's about tracking where your dollar goes. When you go to Stop &amp; Shop and you buy a case of water bottles, it comes with twenty-four to, sometimes they sell bolts of like forty-eight plastic bottles, and that is just going right back into the earth. So, instead of buying plastic, we can buy, like, Hydro Flask, Yetis, or just cheaper models of water bottles, that's gonna help eliminate the plastic, and that's kind of our message, is just to let high school students know, and the community know, different ways that they can attack this problem, and provide for a greener future.
So, basically, our mission is, simply put, as we've said, is to reduce the amount of pollution within Somerset and Berkeley, and what we're doing for a lot of students is we're not only creating community service opportunities for students who aren't involved in athletics, who aren't involved in the band and music, who don't have that access that most people do, to get out and kind of thrive in building up those community service hours. You need twenty to graduate, you need at least twenty-two. You need 20 to graduate, you need at least 25 to join the National Honor Society. And what we're doing is we're taking an amount of time every couple of weeks and we are going to beaches, to parks, and we're just cleaning up and giving out community service to people who need it to graduate, people who want it to thrive in the National Honor Society. With, excuse me, within our club, we also provide leadership roles. Because I know a topic that Rory discussed about possibly having within the club is involving the freshmen through the senior class. And we would take a couple of people from each of the classes and we kind of create a board within them. And they would kind of run and funnel all of the ideas out that get brought up through them and then they bring them up through us. And that allows each of the classes to have their own unique voice throughout the school and throughout this club in terms of kind of being the change that kind of alters the sense of what goes on within the town in terms of what goes on in cleaning up certain areas of the town to create a better future for not only themselves, but everyone around them, for their next generation of kids and parents.
All right, so let's wrap it up. So overall, we have many plans. We're looking at doing several events within the next few weeks, just to, you know, cleaner streets, cleaner parks, cleaner waterfront locations. We're going to try to work within this school to try and convince kids and then to use those kids to try and convince their parents and so on and so forth. So we look forward to coming back and updating you as to the progress that we've made. And I'm really excited about this year when it comes to DECA and our project as well. Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions?
I really would like to see you take your message to our three selectmen at one of their meetings beyond your agenda because this is a great message. And I know the town has, twice a year, they have a cleanup day. And to hear what you're doing, especially a most valuable resource, water, is just fantastic. So just think about that in the future about going to our selectmen in both towns. And just keep continuing what you're doing. I know we're proud of you or what you're doing at DECA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick thing, something about water bottles is something that I've been trying to avoid at my house. But I do find sometimes that when I'm out and about and you need something to drink and you go to a Cumberland Farms and something like that, you know, you really don't have a choice but to buy, especially if you don't have it, even if you do have it. One of the states that I visit, and I wish I could remember, I think it was a WowWow. They actually had a water dispenser there so people could go there and I think it was like 20 cents to fill it up. So that might be something that you may want to tap into and see. Maybe some of these local stores in our community could do something like that. So, you know, people who do have the Yetis or whatever the case may be, they may be able just to fill it and pay the 20 cents. Because we do have, you know, in Fall River, you can see the gallons for 25 cents. But that may prevent people from going into the store without their mugs. And people are doing it now at Dunkin' Donuts too.
There are incentive programs that, you know, private sector companies are trying to look for ways to incentivize people to make the changes for themselves, right? For people to decide that, just being conscious, we're not asking you to go way out of your way to save the turtles. It's become this cliche. It's not really even about that. It's just, we can make easy and simple decisions that aren't going, it's not a punishment, it's nothing like this. So I like what you're saying and I think that those are great ideas and I think that, like, exactly. Kids are just, everyone has their own ideas about how to do this. So I think that the organization and bringing people together in a way, that they know that they're not alone in caring about this, I think that that could be very useful. And that's what we're trying to do this year. So thank you.
And the next item on the agenda is a considerable DECA overnight trip to Washington DC. So before all of you leave us. Mr. Landzinski, have you had an opportunity to review the proposal that's made? Do you have any comments or are you...
No, it looks like a great opportunity. Anytime you get an opportunity to have our kids go on a more national stage and learn from each other and have just that experience, I think it's just a huge growth model for them. I think in knowing these young men, you know, I know they'll take what they've learned and not just take it for themselves, but then pass it on to everybody else within the group because that's the important part. It's nice for them to know and for them to grow, but if they can share and make everybody else stronger because of it, that's what's really beneficial. And, you know, it is a small group. I know the advisor will be there with them. So those numbers don't bother me at all. I think it's just a wonderful opportunity.
Do you have a question or comments?
I think you mentioned in the material, how many students would be going? Is it five?
Four students and then I'm obviously the advisor. So we wouldn't need a chaperone or anything like that. And we...
Well, you would be the chaperone.
I would be. Yes, I would be.
That's a lot of responsibility.
It is, but, you know, I mean, I don't know if you know the four students that we're speaking to. But they're really big kids, they're responsible, they're excited about the opportunity. We, I have reached out to other schools as well. There are a few local, I want to go, there's a couple of others that they said we can kind of like groom with them if we need to, kind of keep the cost down too, but we're going to fundraise for it, so.
Do you know how you're going to get there at this point?
Well, depending, we've got a couple of different thoughts on that. One of them, we did look up some prices for flights and actually it was pretty reasonable. We do a voucher for, it was like 130 bucks or something like that, so, you know, per person, which wasn't too bad.
The plane tickets are ready to be bought and the transportation and the room, everything is ready to go. It's just that we were looking at and considering the possibility of an alternative means of transportation as to save money. But everything is a lot in that way.
I was just going to suggest, traveling to DC, I find the Southwest, Baltimore is one of the hubs for Southwest. And the train actually comes to the Baltimore airport. So it's very easy to fly to Baltimore and grab the Amtrak train, which takes you right into Union Station in the center of DC. And it's probably the most economical way to get there. So I just thought I'd mention that as a possibility. The other thing I wanted to ask you, are you going to have a good part of the day open? I'm not sure when you're planning on getting there on Friday.
It depends again. We weren't sure exactly what our plan was going to be yet. We pretty much just came up with this, or what, a weekend, two weeks ago or something, I guess. And then realized what we've got to do, you know, get approval and go through the steps. So we've done some research, but we haven't, I know that there are a couple of events that the kids and I will be able to attend, see in the city and go into, you know, certain key locations and stuff, so.
I was just going to mention, it says here that most of the day, I think it says most of the day on Friday is open. So I was going to suggest, if you're going to get there earlier in the day, you might reach out to Congressman Kennedy's office. Because I've found his staff to be extremely helpful. And I think of the three legislators who might represent us in Washington, his staff might be the most accommodating in terms of arranging something for you while you're there. So that's just another thought.
I just want to tag along. That's what, my daughter loves Washington DC and we do go there often. And Senator Kennedy, he's outstanding. You know, especially Ashley down there. If you want to ask for her, just ask for Ashley and she'll be really helpful. And the other thing, the reason why I tend to go to DC with my daughter a lot is it's $49 from Providence to Reagan. And you can actually take the train, and it's a five-minute train into downtown city, and it's like $49 each way. So you may want to consider that. And I know they always have these sales. So I think it's going to be great for you and especially you as the new advisor and also for the students. So I wish you nothing but the best and I hope you learn a lot and share that knowledge with the rest of your group.
I think it's a great opportunity for the kids. And we even talked about the, you know, seeing how things go this year. And maybe actually we might take a student from maybe the 10th grade group, you know, so they can kind of get even more of an experience to share with their, you know, their social experience.
So Ernie, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the DECA program to travel to Washington DC for this program.
Second. I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And thank you so much for coming here this evening.
Thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda, number five, update on new schedules duties. Mr. Landzinski?
So now that we're about six weeks into our new schedule, it's been a, it's been a great, it's been a great experience. It seems to be running really, really smoothly. Some interesting things that have come up in talking to staff members and students. We've, before we started this year, one of the big concerns was the 88-minute block and what we were going to do with that. And in talking to staff, I think because, and Andy Lawrence actually brought it up and had a nice way of putting it, we focused so much attention on that 88 minutes. We didn't realize what staff is actually having a hard time with is the losing of the seven minutes on the Monday, Wednesday, Friday. The 88, they've done so much work on preparing and how to create a lesson and how to engage everybody and keep everybody engaged for 88 minutes. But they find that the 50-minute periods are really moving very quickly. I was speaking to two students in my office yesterday and I asked them about the new schedule and they said, you know, what they really like about it is the day flies. I said, well, is it Monday, Wednesday, Friday flies or Tuesday, Thursday? They're like, both. They're like, the day just seems to go so much faster than it did in the past. And their reaction was that they, you know, they said, you know, we were all really nervous about it last year, but now that we're involved with it, it's easy. Nobody's having a problem with it. It's fine. It's, we've all just kind of gotten adjusted to it. We also, they interviewed me about the Blu-ray to block also. And they were funny because when they started their interview, they said, oh, we want to ask you some questions about the Blu-ray to block and what you think of it. I said, well, it doesn't really matter what I think of it. What do you think of it? That's what's really important to me. And their opinion was that they love it. So we've been able to do, use the Blu-ray to block for the two purposes that we want to use it. We wanted to use them for enrichment slash extra help. And we've been able to do that for three different weeks. And then we were able to use it last week so that we could have class meetings and big class topics. So we were able to use it for both purposes and it worked out really well for both. I know last time I was here, you folks were asking what some of the topics were for the Blu-ray to block. And so this time I actually have my list, so I'll read off some of these. And these are all choices that students can make. So dream home design and introduction to interior design, chemistry, academic support, graphic engineering support, 17th through the 19th century colonial and American clothing, career exploration, show choir, elder community project, academic support in ELA, 3D modeling support, world travel 101, college essays workshop. Let's keep going down. Remediation for algebra and geometry, creative writing workshop, digital detox, Alfred Hitchcock Film Fest, travel budgeting and tourism. Trying to see passport to France. I don't know if you actually get a passport to France, but that'd be a pretty cool one. Stephen King, The Man, The Myth, and His Monsters, career interest inventories and cookies. So they've learned that if you add cookies to anything, kids will show up. Ultimate Frisbee, Hustle 101, The Art of Henna, Mark Room's Mindfulness, Meditation and Muse, figure drawing, The Heron Project Club, science fiction, weightlifting, nutrition, and flexibility, What I Wish I Knew, Getting Ready for the Transition to College, Unified Social Club, Basic Human Interactions. It goes on and on. Couch to 5K, Creating Usable Mobile Apps. I can go on and on and on. And that's just the taste of what we have. And so students are making these selections, trying these different, these different topics, and they're loving it. And the students that I was talking to said, what they really love about it is it gets them to have an opportunity to see something and try something they've never tried before. And there's not a big commitment. So, you know, we joked about it being a little bit like going to a buffet. You can try all those things you always wanted to try and it's really okay if you don't like it. So we're working through the process and the software I wish was a little bit more robust than it is. I wish there were more features in it than it has, but we're making it work. We, I decided, you know, I need some help. So who in the building can help? I go run into Jen Ashley, who helps with everything. So Jen and I have been working together to try to streamline this for teachers, to make it a little bit more streamlined for them and to make it a little bit easier for students. So each week it's gotten a little better as far as the signups and we just keep moving forward. And it's really been exciting to see it take off.
Dave, can you talk a little bit about how the topics are identified for Blu-ray to block?
So teachers put them into the Enriching Students software. And then with that come, they write their own descriptions. So students will click on for the day. They, so everybody has a different view. The one thing I don't like about the software is, for example, when I look at my admin site, I can't see what a student sees. So I literally go into the library, say, hey, can you help me out? And they come in and then we can compare. So when a student logs in, they'll go over to the date and they'll have, we have what's called Blu-ray to block one and Blu-ray to block two. Because we want to give the opportunity for students to go to two separate things for 42 minutes apiece. So teachers will either set up their description and say, this is an 88-minute course. So make sure you sign up for this course for the second Blu-ray to block. Or this is a 42-minute course, please make sure you make an extra selection during this time. And then they'll have the rest of the description that talks about exactly what this is. So students can go through, read through what's available. And it's just as simple as a click to put schedule and they get put in.
And are students required to register for, for a class? Or do students have the opportunity to use it as a study?
So that's where they would pick their academic support. So we ask them, if you, if you want to spend some time to get some help and to try to get some, we're going to pick the subject that you have, that you need some support in. So that way you would go there. And that way that instructor is there that can help you along with what you need to do. Now, like anything else, not everybody follows directions, so not everybody makes selections. So for example, this morning, you know, when I got in bright and early, I go in, I have a list of unscheduled students. I see what's available and then they kind of just get placed in there. And so what usually ends up happening, then the student gets nervous, they come, I didn't sign up for this. You didn't sign up for anything. Well, can I change it? No, this is why you need to make your selection so you get what you want. And so usually it happens once and then they stay pretty in tune about picking what they want to pick.
Thank you.
No worries. Mr. Landzinski, can you provide us any color on how duties are going now with the new schedules in place?
We don't have duties.
Okay. And is that transition been difficult or...
Yes. Because the duties for us were really how we were able to support when the teachers were out. So right now it's beginning of the school year, not a lot of absenteeism, flu hasn't hit. So we have extra subs, more than we've had in the past, to try to prepare for this. But we're already running into situations where we're running out of subs. Sometimes subs can't be here. So we have about four to five that come in every single day. Sometimes it's six. But we're using them for a lot of different reasons that we were using staff members for. My fear is, when the flu bug hits, we're not going to have people to stay in the classrooms like we used to. We used to have the duties where they were considered bathroom duties. They weren't really for the bathrooms. Very rarely did anybody actually end up in front of a bathroom. We were always taking them and putting them in classrooms. We don't have that ability anymore. But we'll make it work.
Dave, was there any offers you had, I tried to keep up with the academic...
Sorry.
Was there anything that pertained to like, I hate to bring this up, like civility and politics throughout the world? Is there a cause like that?
So it's funny you bring that up.
Where they can debate each other.
So it's funny you bring that up. So I was walking around today because I wanted to see some of the, some of the programs that were going on. For example, I stopped at Mr. Kaya, Kaya Hamburgs, and he was doing improv. So I watched him do improv for a while. Then I stopped by and saw Mr. Petty and he was doing extra help. And so we were talking a little bit about that with his kids that were there. And he had mentioned that one young lady in our school has been begging him to do a political conversation, kind of debate. And he said, yep, I'll do it. He goes, he said, you know, Mr. Landzinski, I have very different views than she does, but I know she'll hold her own. And I said, I know the young lady, I know she will. So he's going to offer something like that where they can have a genuine conversation about politics and go back and forth. So I know he's going to be looking to start one of those relatively soon.
But to yours, one of the ones that you read, I think is the one that Mrs. Pereira...
Basic Human Interactions is what Mrs. Senora Pereira started. So it was, it was really good. How to have eye contact, how to, you know, how to act, how to do these things. And it was interesting because a number of the kids that we asked to be part of our Niask visit all went to that class to make sure they knew what to do when the Niask people came and were asking questions. So it was fun.
Thank you.
No worries.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, the only thing I wanted to mention was, when we were considering the change in schedule and we knew that teachers would be spending more time in the classroom and less available for duties, we understood that there was a trade... We understood that there was a trade-off and that there might be some expense involved in covering whatever the essential responsibilities were that teachers were previously fulfilling in the so-called duty periods. So we really need a handle on what you anticipate and what the budgetary considerations might be as the year progresses so that we are prepared. We didn't, we didn't intend that we would just leave you high and dry. We understood that there may be some issues that we would have to address and follow up, so.
It's less about the money, to be honest with you, and more about the supply. You don't have a lot of people who wanna be substitutes at a high school. A lot of people who wanna be substitutes wanna be with the little kids. They're cute, they're fun. You can do that. The older kids tend to intimidate a little bit. We call everybody on our list. We bring them in as much as we can. There's just not a lot of people who are able or willing to do that. So, you know, that's, that's my concern. It's, the money's always a concern. But even if the money is there, I'm concerned we don't necessarily have the supply that's out there to bring people in.
And high schools typically had how many building substitutes in the past?
We always had four.
And well, we did, we were planning on seven this year to address those concerns. But as Mr. Lanziski said, sometimes it's, some days it's five, some days it's six. Have we had seven at all?
It's been twice so far, I think, twice or three times over the last six weeks have we actually had all seven. And it happened to be a day where nobody called all sick. So then you do have a flood of people who are here and we have, we give them stuff that we can have them do. But it's just, it's just difficult. It's, that part is, it may be fine. I'm gonna look positive. It's gonna be fine. Nobody's gonna get sick this year. We're gonna be okay. We got enough. My, you know, but going off of past experience, we'll see what happens.
Please keep us informed if a situation needs some sort of special attention.
And are we, are we making any any different kind of effort to recruit substitutes?
I know it was on School Spring, so we had them. Though I think, I don't think it's, it might be still live.
We, it is still live and I just ask one of the administrative assistants in the office to refresh that every so often. So it then repopulates at the top of our list, so it's, it's fresh again. So I don't know where it is right now in the queue of available positions for Somerset Berkeley. But we have, we've done that several times over the summer and at the beginning of the school year.
Anything more from the committee?
Thank you very much, Mr. Lanziski.
Anytime.
Next item on the agenda, MCAS results.
Okay. I'll get your one here. That's okay. I can, I can stand a little bit. This is always a lengthy presentation, so I've tried to condense it a bit this year. But just to give an overview of where we are with MCAS results, but also with the, how MCAS and a few other indicators are affecting the accountability of the school. All right, so just very quickly first, I have here the, and you have this in front of you, the twenty eighteen MCAS results as well as the twenty nineteen. You'll see that there are for ELA and for math, some significant differences in the numbers. It's not because we did so poorly this year in ELA and math compared to twenty eighteen. It was a totally different test. So this was, we've been talking about this for several years. Spring twenty nineteen was the year that the high school was going to catch up with the grades three through eight and have the next generation MCAS test. So as a result of that brand new test, there's a new baseline that's been established and a new, just new thresholds for what the different categories are. So you'll see, just comparing twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, we used to have the system that you're likely familiar with where there were four categories. Warning, needs improvement, proficient and advanced. And we had last year proficient percent who were proficient or higher. In ELA it was ninety-three and in math it was eighty-four. In twenty nineteen with the new standards, you'll see that the categories are different. And actually, the categories for the science, technology and engineering are still proficient, advanced, needs improvement and warning. But for ELA and math is now relative to expectations. So the percentage of students who are exceeding the expectations, meeting, partially meeting and not meeting. So first, if we look at the far right column, you'll see that the numbers who were either warning previously or not meeting the expectations now, they're still roughly the same, about five percent or so on average are not meeting the expectations. Partially meaning, you'll see that the percentage there is significantly higher than what the old, what the former needs improvement category was. And what we, we had been used to, a very high percentage of advanced students receiving the advanced level under the legacy MCAS tests. And now under the new test, yeah, percentage exceeding expectations, we have sixty percent in ELA, nineteen percent in math. Overall, seventy percent of our students were proficient, I'm sorry, met or exceeded the expectations in ELA, seventy-two percent in math. And science, technology and engineering was seventy-six percent. And that was, seventy-six percent were proficient or advanced. I had from last year, twenty eighteen, for science, technology and engineering, the seventy-four percent was nine points highest with a plus niners in parentheses. We had gone from sixty-five in twenty seventeen to seventy-four percent in twenty eighteen to seventy-six percent this past year. So we gained two points there. That is really the only one that we can compare one year to the next. Just as a comparison, just so you can see how, just to give you a sense of how Somerset Berkeley compares to some of the other schools. We tend to use the same local schools. We have some regional school districts on there, Dyne Hobeth, Old Rochester, Aponequit as well as some of the other local high schools, KC, Conoverth and Westport. So you can see in math, we're at seventy-two percent at the, at the top of that column, which is, I think that's the third highest there. Old Rochester and Aponequit are scoring slightly above us in math. But you can just see how we can compare with our neighbors. In ELA, again, you can look at that column and you can see how Somerset Berkeley compares to these other seven districts. In science, technology and engineering, seventy-six percent of our students, as I just noted, that's been climbing over the past few years, but it still falls significantly short of most of our neighbors. We have several that are at ninety-one percent, so fifteen points higher, Katie, Stine, or Hobeth and Aponequit. Namely, some others are, the others are in the typically mid-eighties. I will explain, the next column, we'll get into the target percentage. There's a lot that goes into that. That really is about the accountability component of this, where it's factoring in just the, not just these achievement scores, but a lot of other things. But when you look at that last column, the accountability percentile, this just shows where Somerset Berkeley falls on the spectrum compared to other high schools in the state. And you can see, just for comparison, to those other seven local schools. So Aponequit, for instance, is at the eightieth percentile, doing quite well. We have several other districts there. Case is at fifty. Dartmouth is also at fifty. CECO and Westport in the forties and DR and Aponequit, I'm sorry, DR and Old Rochester are in the, loading in seventies. But that gives you a comparison, regardless of how schools are meeting their, their own targets, which is really what that target percentage is. So Case, for instance, I'll just, just see, they met a higher percentage of their targets than we did this past year. But yet in the grand scheme of things, we're, we're farther ahead in the percentile on that scale of comparisons. So with all of these schools, with that target percentage, the highest one being Dyne Hobeth is at seventy-four. Every single one of those schools, and if you recall this from last year, this is the, there are two broad categories that schools fall in. Either schools without required assistance or intervention, or schools requiring assistance or intervention. So two broad categories that all schools are placed in. Depending on which one you're in, you can either be a, if you're in the larger one, you're either meeting your targets or partially meeting your targets. The distinguishing factor, if you have that percentage, that seventy-five percent or greater, you're meeting your targets. Less than seventy-five percent, you are partially meeting. And that list of eight schools I just showed you, every single one of them falls in this category. So everyone is partially meeting because no percentage there was over seventy-five, or over seventy-five or more. Okay, so most schools are falling in this partially meeting targets. Now, just to look a little bit deeper, these are the broad categories. Achievements, student growth, which we've been looking at, high school completion, we always have the graduation rates and dropout rates. Progress towards English proficiency, that one does not apply to us because we do not have a population of English learners that's large enough to be counted as a subgroup. Chronic absenteeism, which we've talked about, and advanced coursework completion. So when you put all of this, oh, advanced coursework completion, just so everyone has an idea, these are the courses that satisfy that. Mostly AP classes, some advanced math classes, and then dual enrollment IB classes if we offer them, which we do not, and other major classes. In terms of how all of this plays out, there's a certain percentage of points for each of those categories. You can see by that. List, the far right column applies to us because we do not have a English learner population. So we take the ten percent in the second to the bottom row and then it redistributes to achievements, student growth. This is Somerset Berkeley's for all students, just to give you an idea of where we are. We talked about the composite performance index in the past, are these ninety-eight point four numbers. If you score, if you exceed, meet your expectations, a student is assigned a one on hand. If you are partially meeting expectations, you get a seventy-five. If you don't meet, you get another score. And then throws all of this in, gets an average number, and that's what the ninety-eight point four was in twenty eighteen. Based on that score in twenty eighteen, Somerset Berkeley had an ELA achievement target of ninety-nine point eight. It's not a percentage, but it's a score based on their achievement scores. That was our target. In twenty nineteen, we actually had ninety-eight point seven CPI composite performance index. Fell short of the target. So this is the confusing aspect of all of this. We fell short of the ninety-nine point eight, but because it was greater than ninety-seven and a half, we got all four points for that, in the category, and we were labeled exceeding the target in ELA. In math, our composite score in twenty eighteen was ninety-five eight. Our target was ninety-seven five. Our twenty nineteen math score was ninety-four point five. So it dropped. It did not reach that ninety-seven point five level. It did drop by one point three points. And based on that, we got one point and we fell into the no change category. Even though it was a drop, it was, I think within a two-point range, it's considered no change, one, one point five to two points. And we can follow that. I've got science achievement. We earned one point. We had a ninety-two point five to a ninety point five. So like math, we dropped a couple of points and a couple of CPI points and earned one point for the accountability. For ELA and math growth, the target's really anywhere between forty and sixty. If, if it's between forty and sixty, you're getting, you're considered typical growth. Between forty and fifty is low growth. Between fifty and sixty is high growth. And to get all four points, you need to be over sixty. You can see our ELA was fifty-five, our math was forty-eight point seven. So we earned typical growth in both of those. One was high, one was low. Chronic absenteeism, we went from, oh, that was actually, there's a mistake there. Chronic absenteeism, we were at ten point nine percent. Our target was nine point six. It actually came in at eleven point nine. So our chronic absenteeism rose by one percentage point. Sorry for that. And because there was a decline in that, we did not receive any points. If it was ten point eight percent, we would have received, I think, one point. So we just missed that. But it's upsetting to see our absenteeism number grow. I'll still go back and remind you of what that was in twenty fifteen, where it was well into the mid twenties, that same category. And chronic absenteeism is defined as missing ten percent of the school year. So eighteen or more days, any absence whatsoever, medical or not, suspended or not. Just if they are not here for eighteen or more days, the student is considered chronic, chronically absent. So it does not take into account excused or unexcused. Advanced coursework, we went from fifty-eight, fifty-five point eight percent of our students in twenty eighteen. We had a target of sixty point two. We saw an increase of about two percentage points to fifty-seven point seven. So we improved. It was below the target. We earned two points. And just recall the advanced coursework slide that I had a few moments ago. Four-year graduation rate, we went from ninety-three point seven percent to ninety-five, I'm sorry, to, yeah, ninety-five point seven. The target was ninety-five five, so we met the target. We, you know, we were better than the target, but still in a range that was considered to be meeting it, not necessarily exceeding it. It would have to have been somewhere above ninety-six percent for that to happen. There's also, oh, by the way, that four-year graduation rate is called a COBART rate. So it's only looking at the students who started enrolling when they were freshmen. And then tracking their, how many of those students graduated within four years? So if there was a transfer student who came in as a junior, we have, we had no say of what was going on in the first two years. So those students are not included in the four-year COBART graduation rate. Extended engagement rate looks at students who are five and six years out. So class of twenty sixteen and class of twenty seventeen, or is it even six and seven years out? So ninety-six point two percent of the members of the class of twenty sixteen either had graduated on time or were still engaged and going to school. Could be our community evening school program here or education somewhere else. Get, working toward their high school diploma. Steph?
No, I'll, I'll ask at the end, Jeff. Thank you.
And because of that, our target was ninety-seven point nine. We came in, we actually, it dropped a little bit to ninety-four point nine percent for twenty seventeen. Because of that, because of that decline, there were no points awarded for that one. And our annual dropout rate was point five percent in seventeen. It dropped to point four percent in twenty eighteen. The target is one percent. We're better than the target. We receive, anything less than one percent, I believe, is considered exceeding the target. So you put all of that in, and if you go on the Dusty website, I know it's tough to see here. You have it printed out. I'm not sure if it's a little bit, I know it's still a small print because it's on half a page. But this is what it looks like if you go to the school and district profile page for Somerset Berkeley Regional High School under accountability. It throws in, all those points I just said are in this category here. So you can look at some of those, the colored bands going across, achievement total, we are six out of the twelve points. For the growth total, I forget, like, four, five out of eight? Is that what it says? Seven out of twelve for high school completion. And then for the additional indicators, advanced coursework and chronic absenteeism, two out of eight. So all of those factor all of that in and we had three, let me see, five point six out of ten point seven. So we earned fifty-two percent of the points that we could have earned for all students. I'm not gonna go through the exacting category. On the right-hand side, you have it there in front of you. We also look at that lowest performing twenty-five percent. Apply the same categories for them. And our lowest performing twenty-five percent was last year, we earned significant points in twenty eighteen. This year, they only, we earned eleven percent of the points. We missed many of our targets for the lowest performing twenty-five percent. So then we have those, we have the fifty-two and the eleven, and the average of that is thirty-two percent. That's our score for twenty nineteen. And then if you look at the very top of this page, we have the twenty eighteen, actually, I do have it, all right. Where we had, we're at seventy-nine percent in twenty eighteen. We're at thirty-two percent here, twenty eighteen. It was weighted at forty percent. Twenty nineteen was at sixty percent. So it gives us a total score of fifty-one percent, which is what you saw on the previous slide with the. So it gives us a total score of fifty-one percent, which is what you saw on the previous slide with the eight school districts, eight high schools that were listed. And, yeah, that was, that was the last of the slides. So it's a lot of information, but it gives you an idea of the end test scores, as well as how everything is applied to the accountability. Mrs. Field, do you have a question?
I did. Going back to that extended engagement rate, so if I understand this correctly, what they do is they calculate the engagement of students five years out, you said, from date of graduation, or four?
Alright, so this is, even though it's the twenty nineteen, we don't know what the, when this came out, when this comes out, we don't know what the twenty nineteen graduation rate is necessarily yet. So we're always looking back at, I know this is dropouts, but these numbers are based on twenty eighteen. And these are twenty seventeen. But for the extended rate, we want to see after five years of them starting high school, a year after they graduated, how many students had either graduated from high school or were still working to get their diploma? They were still enrolled somewhere, waiting to earn their high school diploma. So it was ninety-five, ninety-four point nine percent. So I don't, let me see. See, our four-year graduation rate in twenty eighteen was ninety-three point seven. Next year, when we're looking at this, we want to see that ninety-three point seven to be ninety-six or ninety-seven. A couple of the students who did not graduate on time here, we want to make sure that they either graduate, or they're still enrolled.
Got it.
So we actually did have that drop off between those two years.
So Jeff, do you use this data aggregately? So not looking at specifics and saying, okay, you know, these are the specific areas? But do you look at this, this data aggregately and then make recommendations high level as to where focus needs to be?
Particularly with these that you're talking about, this is where we have conversations with, you know, we want to look at that here, we want to make sure kids are, we're doing everything we can to first, make sure that they're graduating. We want this number to be as high, we want this to be a hundred percent, ideally. And when it's not, how can we continuously keep them in school? We don't want them to drop out, we don't want them to go elsewhere. So then that's where Mr. Adyar comes in, and we try to keep kids still, maybe they're working during the day, but still engaged at night, and we do, we'll have those conversations to try to make sure that we're keeping kids engaged in school.
And I also think that that data, and we'll talk about it a little bit later when we give a very brief report on the strategic plan, but I also think that that slide, something like that, is super helpful for committee level to say, okay, where should we have, where do we need to put our priorities?
And for strategic planning too, I had that subcommittee earlier. But then, some of these others, I know our content coordinators, they dive deeply into the actual, into the data to figure out where the shortfalls were globally, and, you know, what, what adjustments need to be made within the classes. And I know Ms. Haskell has frequent meetings with our content coordinators where these discussions come up, they're looking at the data. So yes, that is, this, this is a very high-level overview, but there is a lot of information behind this that obviously is, we don't want to, this is maybe boring enough for the public, we don't want to go too deeply into it at a meeting like this. Mr. McDonald, do you have a question?
Superintendent, correct me if I'm wrong, the target percentage of fifty-one percent, didn't we have a growth in that though, were we lower last year? Was that, was that a lower figure, or am I wrong in that?
For...
Well, since you had fifty-one percent accountability percentage, three, didn't we go up in that?
So for this number here, this fifty-one percent?
Yeah. Was that lower last year or something?
No, it wasn't, it was actually seventy-nine percent last year. And this is why last year Somerset Berkley, with that first number, this is the first year we had this accountability system, Somerset Berkley had, remember that category was meeting targets or partially meeting targets? Somerset Berkley was one of the few high schools around to meet the targets last year. But since that's still a factor, but we did have this drop in twenty nineteen with the, with the larger weight, caused that decrease to happen.
So it will take a while to digest all of this information, and we may really want to come back and discuss this further at a future meeting, once we've really had an idea of thinking this through. There are just a couple of observations that I would make. When we saw our results for last year, we talked about the lower twenty-five percent of the classes, and how important it was to some members of the committee that we focused resources on that group of students. So it's particularly troubling to me that there's been such a significant decline in the performance of that group of students in one year. But that's just, that's just an observation. The other, the other observation, or more than an observation, as, as you know, for the last nine years, I have been raising the issue of our science scores. I really feel that we are significantly underperforming in science. And other schools in the area, the only, as you said, the, the real test in comparison to prior years. And this year's scores is the science, because that's remained the same, it's not going to change until, I guess, this year. And we knew that Case was making a real effort in the area of science. And four or five years ago, they were performing at the same level as we were. And through whatever extra effort they made there, they have made significantly more progress than we have made, to the point where their science score is, I believe, ninety-one, and ours is seventy-six. The other schools that I look to compare ourselves to, like Dighton Rehoboth and Aponequid, as you mentioned, are in the low nineties and we're at seventy-six. And this has gone on year after year after year after year. And I would have thought by now that there would have been a real plan to address these scores. And we're just not making the progress that I feel that we should be making in that area. We've also talked about the number of students that enroll in the AP courses that are in the science area. And that's quite low. And I, I just, I don't, I know I may ruffle feathers, I say this every year, and I probably ruffle feathers every year, but I'm really getting frustrated, exasperated, that we're not making progress. And, and I understand from an educator's perspective, that teaching to the test is not the best approach. But when I look across the board and see that the schools that I think are comparable to ours in terms of size and communities, and see that they're substantially outperforming us in science, whereas our relative scores in ELA and math are pretty much comparable. Some a little higher, some lower. And, and I think we do a good job in those areas, but we're just not coming to grips with the issue in science from my perspective. And I don't know, you know, I've heard that we were going to be changing from students taking this test as freshmen to, which, to me, it makes absolutely no, but again, I'm not an educator, but it makes absolutely no sense to me that we test freshmen to establish a level of proficiency in science to make them eligible to graduate. Seems crazy. But I thought we were moving toward testing our students in sophomore year in a, in biology, rather than in general science. So I, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm just, I've never, despite the fact that I have raised this issue year after year after year after year, I really haven't gotten a satisfactory answer as to why our performance in science is significantly below the comparable high schools in our area.
So, and let me just address the, the year that the science test is taken, and why. So we do offer the introductory physics test at the conclusion of our introductory physics, physics course in grade nine. The only other testing option by the state is biology. Our core sequence is physics, chemistry, biology. So our, our, the only other time that students could take the test, it would be at the end of the junior year, I'm not even sure if that's, I think they have to do it by the end of the sophomore year. So it's either physics or chemistry, or we change our entire, flip our entire science program around and put it out of sequence, and teach biology either in grade nine or grade ten. But that, that's flipping the curriculum around, and I think harming students in the end, because it's not, that's not the good sequence to have. So we could teach biology first, but to flip it around because of a test would be the wrong thing to do. So really, the only option we have for testing is grade nine physics.
Well, what are these other schools testing?
Most of them, grade nine physics.
Well, and why aren't we doing as well as they are in grade nine physics?
But I, like I said, I want to address your question about the, the test. I, I have mentioned before, and I don't want to make it sound like I'm, I'm making excuses, but for the last, the previous four years, I think three or four years, we've had, we have been unable to hire a full-time physics teacher who is teaching grade nine physics. We have had long-term substitutes teaching introductory physics. Until this year, now we have, I think it was three consecutive school years? And some of those years, we had two long-term substitutes teaching physics. Because we were just, we have been unable to hire them. We have an excellent physics teacher now, so we are looking for change there. But our staffing, I think, was certainly part of that.
I just have a quick comment. You know, obviously, sitting on both committees, and knowing that we're testing our students in the ninth grade, what are we doing in our eighth grade, even seventh grade level to get them also prepared for that ninth grade test? Like, are they even, you know, what kind of math, science programs? What are all the districts doing? I, I know you guys, you all talk to each other, and it's a great thing. I'm not an educator, and I understand, and I'm glad that you're mentioning, you know, this is why we teach this way, because it benefits our students in the long run, not for the test. But how can we prepare our students even in eighth grade to get them ready for, because it seems like, you know, asking our, I, I, when, at what month do they take this exam?
Yeah, this is in June.
In June, so we're really focusing just on, you know, a year, when we should be maybe even starting in the previous year.
And we have, this is, was this year two or three for our new science program at the middle school? So we, Mr. Lynch and I, a few years ago, were comparing our eighth grade programs. And we both saw that neither one of us was happy with our eighth grade science performance. And I think we were, we had scores that were relatively low. Like I said, neither one of us was very pleased with them. And we have since started to make changes in our middle school program because we want to make sure that we're closing gaps there before they get to the high school. So it's not just a high school problem, but, you know, it does start, to your point, in the middle school. And both districts, I don't want to speak too much for Berkeley, but I know he and I did have this conversation, but we have been making some significant strides in the middle school to, to address our science program there too.
Yeah, because I, I don't believe this is just now a high school issue, I think it's becoming both middle schools as well. We really need to get a head start on this, because I'm, you know, looking at the scores on all avenues, it's concerning, it's concerning and it's disappointing. So that's why I, I just, I really don't know what the solution is, because I'm not an educator, but I just don't feel right now, well, what, what we're doing is really working. And I think we really need to maybe even consider looking at our curriculum and throwing it away and starting all over again, or something. I, I don't know, and I don't want to be as dramatic as that, but I'm just thinking it's concerning when you see it drop. And I, and I have to assume none of our administration, administration is pleased with this either, so. I, I just, but I, I kind of have to agree with Mr. Pierce, because this is my third year in separate years, and I've heard Mr. Pierce every year, every, at least three years that I've been on this board, I've heard him express this concern that we're behind, that we're behind. And it's just, and, and I'm not really just looking at the, the science section, I'm just looking at all three, I just, you know. Because we're really, we're either in the middle of this category of these eight districts, or we're really the last one, and that's, that's really bothersome.
So from my perspective, I think there's a lot, like Mr. Pierce had said, and as you had indicated at the beginning, there's a ton of data here, and it takes a while to consume it all and really absorb it and understand what it's trying to tell us. I think there's a lot for us to be proud of here. It's a new system, and you had indicated last year, Mr. Schumover, that there would be some, you know, period of translation where things would, would look different. We just would need to get used to that, those differences. And certainly, there's a lot for us to be proud of. I do agree with Mr. Pierce, because I, I've been on the committee now for five years, and I think I've heard him speak about the science scores in each of those five years. And I know that, you know, there, there's been initiatives undertaken and, and efforts to try to address it. But it has gotten to a point where, you know, I do agree with him, I do think that there's special attention that should be put there to try to bring those scores up for, for not only our district, but our students as well. And it's important that they have the school, the, the tools they need to, to move on to the next level of science education. And as a former science educator, I, I know you feel the same way. As far as the lowest performing students, so we spent an awful lot of time last year talking about that population and ways that we could support them, and, and try to provide the supports needed in order for that area of, of the scores to be higher. So I, I am somewhat disappointed to see the, the scores that are there. But when you have an opportunity, you know, when something like this happens, you, you, as you guys have done in the past, and in many other areas, you formulate a plan, and you come up with ways that we can improve. And, and I would say ninety-nine times out of a hundred, that's exactly what we do here at Somerset Berkley. So I would be interested in a future meeting to hear your thoughts on ways that we could address, you know, these scores and try to improve the lowest performing students as well at numbers, as well as the, the science scores. As long as the committee is in agreement with that, we'll try to put that on the agenda in November, just to hear your thoughts and the different strategies we could implement to try to address those two areas.
Sure. And one of the big ones that we have addressed, Mr. Lanzinski just talked about with his Blu-ray to block. I know he, with that list of topics that he read, many of the topics are academic support in nature. And half of our school are going into, I'm just going to, roughly half the school is going to blocks of time like that, where they are getting direct support from their teachers, which we never had before. So that, through the contract negotiations, that was a big component that we wanted to go after to make sure that we had that for students, and we do. And I, that, that will have a significant impact.
And I meant to mention this earlier, a little bit of field research for you, Mr. Lanzinski. My daughter's in a sophomore class, and she has reported to me on several occasions that she actually prefers the days where the blocks are longer, as opposed to the blocks being shorter, because they can cover more ground, and it feels as though they, they, in her words, they get more out of the day because they spend more time on task and... words, they get more out of the day because they spend more time on task in a particular topic. So surprisingly, I, I thought that it, you know, would be the opposite, but so far she's reported that she and most of her friends feel that way. And Blu-ray block, she's been availing herself of the additional support more frequently than any of the other topics and she finds that to be very, very useful. So to your point, I think it's, time will tell on that, right? You know, the proof will be in the pudding, if you will, over time. If students are receiving the extra support they need and they've been asking for, it'll show up in, in future years. So, you know, all we can do there is, is just wait. But I am interested, you know, again, these two, these two topics, one was a major focus of us last year, the lowest performing students and Mr. Pierce has beat the science drum every single year that I've been on the committee. So it would be, I think, advantageous for us to, to try to address those two areas in a future meeting.
And we also, if you recall too, with the new schedule, and I don't, I'm not going to try to make up a number here, I don't recall what it is, but we also have, most teachers except for science have seen a significant increase in instructional minutes over the course of the year.
Ooh, the blue light.
Do you recall what the percent increase was or?
I believe it was 1,700 minutes over the course of the year.
And I, and speaking with a few teachers, they are already saying how they are ahead of their pace that they've been used to for many years. So that also is going to have an impact on most areas. Like I said, not science, science, we actually, because we had a lab period in there already, but in the other subjects, we have more instructional time with our students.
I can't, I, yes. I definitely have looked back to last year, I'm at least two weeks ahead on the pace. So it's been successful on, on that end. And I think it will build as the year goes on. So I think pacing, it's really worked out well.
Can I just mention one other thing, a new area on the absenteeism. We hate to see that, even though it wasn't a huge change, it's a change for, where the chronic absenteeism has increased some. So if we could, I'd like to see a report on how that chronic absenteeism breaks down by class. I suspect that it's probably in the junior and probably focused largely in the senior class. And if, if that's the case, I wonder if there's something we can do to keep our seniors coming to school on a regular basis. And also here, I know when we addressed this a few years ago, a lot of the push was coming from the faculty that was really concerned. So if there are any thoughts or ideas from the faculty or the administration about this absentee issue and how we might tweak the absentee policy, we certainly would be interested in hearing that.
One of the things with the chronic absenteeism, it's, the easy way of talking about it is that it's, you know, 10% of the days. So we all say, well, there's 180 days at school, it's 18 days, but it's not necessarily. Students who are in school more than 20 days, it's 10% of their days. So for example, if a student comes in for the last term, let's say that's 40 days, it's 10% of those 40 days. So it's not always, well, 18 absences, you just look for the 18 absences, that's where it is. It's not that. If a student comes in halfway through a year, it may be nine absences that puts you over the, over the threshold. So it's, it's not just, sometimes we get caught up in that 18 number because that's the hard and fast, easy number to think about, but we have a number of students that routinely come in from, you know, because of different situations, come in mid-year. And then when they're here, sometimes there are legal issues, sometimes there's home issues. Those days, and as Mr. Skolov was saying, they don't care about what the reason is, whether it's medical, whether it's, you know, it's a runaway situation, whether it's this or that. If you're not here, you're not here. So a lot of the times it's difficult because it's out of your control. It's not that we're not trying to engage students or, students are just, you hear about the chronic absenteeism, you picture everybody at Horse Neck. You know, everybody's taking off going to Horse Neck Beach. A lot of times it's not those situations. A lot of times it's hospitalizations, things of that nature that as we've talked about in past meetings, the social emotional health issues have grown and we're seeing more of those. So when you have a student that goes out of school because of one of those issues and they're at a facility for two weeks, you know, three weeks, that's 15 days toward their 18. That suddenly puts us over. So it's, it's just another concern. It's more complicated than just kids didn't want to come to school today, they wanted to go out to, I don't know why Rocky Point just jumped in my head, the kids don't know what Rocky Point is anymore. But, you know, for an entertainment type of thing.
Any other questions? The whole chronic absenteeism, I just have an issue with when it's a health and I understand that the state doesn't see it that way. Why don't they see it that way?
When we went to the meeting, one of the things they said, well, they're making the assumption that all schools have the same types of issues, so that it should, it should even out compared to everybody else. It was asked by one of our, one of my colleagues, a principal from another school, actually from the Valley of Hope, he asked, you know, what happens? Is there an appeal? Is there a process we can appeal? And basically what they said was, well, yes, but only if your numbers would happen to fall in a range that might possibly push you into another, did we possibly maybe talk to you about maybe an appeal? Is pretty much what they said to us. And they weren't overly fond of getting those types of things. So only if it was going to increase our percentage, our points for us to get a point that would push us into another category, were they even going to talk about allowing us to appeal? Again, they talk it, they talk about it as statistically every school should have about the same amount of problems. And so they, that's why they don't see it as significant.
Has, has this been discussed at the superintendents' levels at your meetings? Because I'm just wondering, is it something that school committees should consider putting a resolution during, you know, one of the things that we have a topic today is to make resolutions, but is this something that we should, as school committee members at a board meeting, make a resolution and hopefully the state will listen to? An overwhelming, or do you think that they will just look at it as?
I know the superintendent's association has expressed some concern about this and, you know, not to restate everything that's just been said here, but certainly when there are medical issues involved or other delicate situations, I don't know if a resolution, I, I don't know then, when everyone, I don't know then how you define a medical excuse for a single day versus something else. I think it's, where, where's the line drawn? But maybe that is something that the school committees might want to consider.
I just look at it as a chronic illness. If you have a chronic illness and you're, let's say, a student is got the, gets into an accident and they're putting him in induced coma because they want him to heal, you know, and that's the same, this is like, you know, things like that, they should be issues where the state should. But still, even if we did get, receive those full points, it's still, you know, I'm just looking at it as, I'm just trying to figure out why.
Yep, but at the, the reason is, and we've said this at these meetings before, if students aren't in school, they're not learning. So we, the state is pushing that we want students in school. We want them in, in our buildings, we want them learning. Because that's going to have, that's one of the most significant impacts on everything else that we have here. So the state wants to maintain that emphasis about making sure that where, that school districts are doing everything that they can to make sure that the students are attending school. So they don't want to go very light on that. Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, I just want to follow up. I agree with Victor. I call that a one-time event, whether it be a concussion by a hockey or a football player, they could be out for 10 to 12 days. And there you go, there's your, there's your whole year period. So that should not count. It should be a one-time event and they should look at those. And I know the principal said you're going to have an appeal process for that later in the year or whatever, but a lot of that's been happening though.
Mm-hmm. And yeah, more so.
Any other comments on this topic? Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Skolov. Next section of the agenda is new business. Item number one is approval of student activity accounts, Raiders turf, National Honor Society, semi-formal dances, yearbook, ski, ski club, black and white dance slash prom, DECA and Viberthon, class of 2020, class of 2021, class of 2022, class of 2023, hip hop club, best buddies and dodgeball. I believe this is Mr. Cal.
I do apologize, I wasn't ready to speak on this.
Okay.
I think maybe Mr., if there are any questions, maybe Mr. Lanzinski is the best person.
Okay. So has everyone had a chance to take a look at the memorandum? It's a pretty standard list of year over year, correct, Mr. Lanzinski?
Correct.
So this is more a formality that needs to be approved on an annual basis?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, you know, it's never a formality.
Whenever you're involved, Mr. Pierce.
I was excited. I was excited. I was excited. I just had a couple of questions. One is, we also have a list of the balances in these accounts. The hip hop club, hasn't that been dissolved?
It has.
So there's a $2,900 balance, what's going to happen to that?
I believe under the procedures that the principal gets the ability to decide where that money is going to get re-appropriated. I believe is what, what the policy says.
The other, I think the other question that I had was on dodgeball. Well, I have one other question. Dodgeball, I know that's a very popular program and very positive, but I was wondering, is there a student organization that?
No, it's, it's used more, there needs to be some kind of mechanism in order to collect the funds to be able to give the scholarship out. So the money that's collected from dodgeball all goes to a scholarship for students in movement arts.
Okay. So my understanding from the seminars that I've been to at the school committee conferences that with student activity accounts, the funds have to be expended by the students. There has to be a student, student organization and student officers who sign off on the expenditures. So is this really a student activity account or a revolving account? That's, if the students aren't deciding how the money is going to be spent, I don't think it's, I think we get into trouble if we call it a student activity account. And I don't know if it's appropriate to call it a revolving account. So I just asked that question, you know? Sorry.
They know it.
But my understanding was that as a result of some things that had happened, not here, but in other parts of the state with funds and student activities accounts, the Department of Revenue has really come down hard on this particular issue. So I just raise that, maybe that can, maybe that can be considered. Because I see that dodgeball is on the list of accounts to, to be considered a student activity account. And then there's also a substantial amount of money in the best buddies account and there's no, no advisor listed for best buddies?
We're hoping to bring back the best buddies next year and that's why we've held that account, that money in that account. There is a plan to bring that back. We didn't want to reappropriate that money and then have that group have to start from scratch again. So the hope is that for next year, we'll be able to start that program back up, they'll have that same money that they can do what they need to do and go from there.
That's in 2021?
Yes, the plan is to send students and the advisors to the conference in Indianapolis this July, July of 2020.
So they'll, they'll be, during the course of this year, they'll presumably be advisors?
Before this year is over, there will be advisors and students identify so that they can attend that conference in the summer.
Because I think with respect to that, the bylaws require advisors have certain qualifications, right?
Correct.
Okay. Because I, I think that's a critically important program and I, I'm really sorry that it hasn't operated for the last two years. I wasn't advocating doing anything with the money. I'm just hopeful that we can really find two advisors that are enthusiastic about the program and we can bring it back for next year. So. Any other questions?
David, did Raiders reaching out dissolve and become part of Raiders turf?
No, Raiders reaching out still exists.
Any other questions?
So I'm looking for a motion to, to approve these student activity accounts with the potential exception of dodgeball until we can get some clarification as to whether that's a student activity account or revolving account.
So move.
Second. I have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
New business item number two, NASC slash NASF voting delegates.
I nominate Mr. Giliducci as our voting delegate.
I say.
Don't leave any sense of communication on that. I don't believe he would be able to attend in that. I think it was.
Really?
Yeah.
No kidding. Done. I mean, I read the resolutions. What a way to spend three hours.
Someone has to be chosen though, right?
Well, I guess we don't have to attend the delegate assembly, but.
So what do you propose? I'm not attending, so.
Well, I think, am I the only person that is attending from this committee? Since you're paying for me to go, I guess I don't have any choice. It's not something I'm enthusiastic about, I'll tell you.
But, okay. So Alex entertained a motion to appoint Mr. Pierce as our voting delegate. So move.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Giliducci isn't going to be at the conference. This will be the first time in 30 years.
Hold on, let me just make sure I'm doing this properly.
And what if he's a representative of Berkeley?
That's not popping up quickly.
Do you have to go to the airport something? I'll drive you and take you back if you have to go to the airport to work this thing. It was in Boston, it was in Hyannis.
And when I say it's in Hyannis, it's in Hyannis in November. So I, I don't think I've been to, I've been to the conference every year that I've been on the school committee. I don't think I've ever been there when it was a pleasant, pleasant three days of weather.
Mr. Carr was saying that the Somerset Berkeley district did pay for Mr. Giliducci's attendance at this year's conference.
Okay.
So most likely he's going as a representative of Berkeley's.
Well, if we paid for it, he's going as our representative.
Right, so one year he'll, he'll go, Berkeley will, will pay the registration, the next year Somerset Berkeley does, this year Somerset Berkeley did pay it.
Somerset Berkeley did pay.
My recollection is that he was unable to attend at the voting delegate. I could be incorrect on that and I'll fall on the sword if I am, but. Item number three, resolutions. Has everyone had an opportunity to take a look at this year's resolutions? Are we prepared to send our voting delegate with the committee's?
Well, I guess with the, with the presentation we received from Decker, it would be hard for us not to support resolution number one, wouldn't it?
So is the appropriate way to do this, to walk through them one at a time?
I would say so, yes.
All right, so looking at the report of the resolutions committee, resolution number one, without reading, do we read all the whereas?
No.
Reading, go.
I think.
All right, so resolution number one is banning polystyrene. Polystyrene, thank you, from schools. If you want to take a minute just to take a look or offer any commentary? If you want to take a minute just to take a look or offer any commentary?
I've read them, I mean, we've had these prior to the meeting.
Yeah, it doesn't, the proposal doesn't kick into 2022, 2023. And as I had mentioned before, I was at my college alma mater for kind of a luncheon thing last year, and they had wooden utensils and paper, everything. So apparently they've already started this kind of program.
I'm looking for a motion to support resolution number one. Second, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution number two pertaining to the educator diversity and professional licensure.
I'd be curious at the superintendent's reaction. I am wholeheartedly in support of diversity. Said that on several occasions and I'm just not sure if this is the best mechanism to do it. But, supported by the Arlington School Committee.
I will, I will just add that it is very difficult for someone who is highly qualified, who is coming particularly where we are, a great educator from Rhode Island who wants to work over in Massachusetts, who has all of the qualifications but has, has not passed, has not taken any of the MTELS, or if they are an administrator, has not completed the PALS assessment. It is very, very difficult to have them get a job in Massachusetts. And the only time as a superintendent where I can explore hiring someone who has not met those qualifications is if there is not a single qualified certified applicant for the position. And even the person could have been fired for 10 consecutive years from 10 previous employers, but if they are certified in the state, they, I have to take that candidate over someone who has high credentials from outside the state. Some, I, I support changes in the system. I don't know if it's completely eliminating the process too. But there are some changes that need to be made to this.
So in your opinion, would it be sensible for us to support these changes or are these not the changes?
I, there are, with the justifications that are here, I believe that, you know, I support, I support all of that. I do, and I'm guessing that this is one that will evolve on the floor through discussions quite a bit. So my guess is the ultimate resolution, the ultimate outcome will be different than what's presented right here. But changes in the system are definitely needed.
Okay. So we send our delegate supporting changes and empower him to be an active part of the conversation?
Yes.
So a motion to, to send Mr. Pierce to the resolutions committee with that understanding? That we're in support of changes?
Support of resolution two?
Yeah.
So moved?
You have a second?
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number three, school transportation.
So I don't think, I don't think that this would impact on us necessarily, but it's probably a positive thing for some school districts, probably. It's supported by Hudson, but I would think maybe cities that might have the option of using the public transportation system would benefit from this.
Certainly greater competition in performance benefits everyone, so. So looking for a motion in favor of resolution number three? So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number four, climate change.
So this one's interesting. There's really, there's two pieces to this one. One that I don't feel has a direct impact on teaching and learning. Really just, MASCE is calling on Congress to take swift and effective action on climate change to protect current and future students. But that, the second piece of this is that it's advocating for funding for school infrastructure need and emergency funding for disaster relief caused by natural catastrophes and extreme weather events.
Mr. Snover, any thoughts on this one?
I think it's more of just sending a message, collective message than anything else.
Is this a message that the community is worth?
Well, I do think if they're going to advocate in general terms, I do think, again, if they're, if they're going to be advocating for funding for school infrastructure need and emergency funding for disaster relief caused by natural catastrophes and extreme weather events.
So I'm looking for a, a motion to, to approve resolution number four?
So moved.
Second, I have a motion in a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Resolution number five, full funding of transportation costs for students in foster and state care.
I think this is important and something that we should support.
Agreed.
So I've moved that we support this resolution.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Resolution six, universal quality pre-kindergarten access in Massachusetts.
This is, this is an extremely important and hot topic. It's one of the real focuses of the Chamber of Commerce Education Committee to support universal pre-K. And there's constant discussion about the importance of beginning the educational process for younger kids and particularly in situations where the students, the children are not receiving support at home, not necessarily out of neglect, but because the parents aren't always equipped to do it. So I don't think it would impact on our K school district because we already have, we already have a program, right?
Well, we have a program. I, I personally would like to see it expand. I, I want to make sure, I think all students deserve access to preschool. Whether it's through the local school district or through the private preschools, all students should have access to it.
Make a motion to support? A second? I have a motion in a second to support resolution number six, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Resolution number seven, poverty in children. Mr. Snover, any thoughts on this one?
This is, I have not read resolution seven.
So one of the things it says is support for revenue stream that supports social and economic priorities for children and families. Is this different than what we currently have in place? Or economically disadvantaged?
Well, it says this is a reaffirmation, so.
Yeah, I think there's, there's a, you know, a lot of similarity between this and the previous resolution. Simply asking to educate, generally educate people about the fact that there's, as I said, maybe even greater need among families that are unable to provide the kind of support for kids at an early age. That's part of what's driving the need for mandatory preschool.
Also, number two, they're not having a healthy breakfast or a healthy lunch. Do I have a motion on this one?
I believe we support this resolution.
A second now, motion to support the resolution number seven in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Resolution number eight, resolution for access to menstrual supplies. Make a motion to support? I have a motion to support, right in a second?
Second.
Does this, yeah.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous? Resolution number nine, charter of school reform.
I believe we support this.
Wholeheartedly.
Second.
Second, yeah.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
You can say whatever you want during this one.
Opposed? We authorize you to support that unanimously.
However you see fit, Mr. Pierce.
Do we, do we need to read the proposal to amend the bylaws as well?
No, it seems, it doesn't seem like a very significant amendment to me. The leadership of the association thinks they need this, it's fine with me.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments on this particular topic? Thank you, everyone. Next item under new business is policy subcommittee update.
Okay, there's, there's no policies for the committee's review. The only update is that our next meeting will be prior to the next school committee meeting on November 14.
Mr. Field? Under budget and financial matters, item number one, approval of monthly invoices for the purposes of educational supplies and materials, professional development, special education tuitions and transportation, maintenance costs, fringe benefits and other operating expenditures. Are there any questions for Mr. Taro on item number one? Here we're done?
Just, just one point of clarification. So I've noticed going through the warrants, Mr. Taro, that we now are going to, and maybe I've missed this in the past, but as far as line items go for sectioning off each official for a gain, that's going to be its own line. I think we did it differently last year, but not that that matters, but just that we'll be, we'll be capturing them by official, by gain. I noticed it in that way, is that's just a little different than how we did it last year.
I can check to see how it was done last, is it, do you have a preference or is it?
Nope, nope.
Well, if it's, I mean, we have, we have this 33-page document and it seems like a third of it is $100 expenditures for officials. And I was just wondering if there was a more efficient way to present it, if it could just all be presented in a single?
On a spreadsheet?
Well, just a, just a single, I mean, you might, you probably have to list all the names and the amounts, but if there's any way that it would just be like one single item?
I think maybe what we could do is a separate warrant for that. It compresses, so it's $1 amount. Let me see what we can do on the officials. Because if they're paying individual officials as a vendor, each one of them is going to be listed.
Yeah, so we can just separate them out so it is, probably maybe not a third, but maybe 25% of all the items that are on the list.
Any other questions or comments? Here we're done, I would ask everyone to please sign these vouchers before you leave this evening. Under budget financial matters, number two, discussion on signing of bill schedule warrants. Mr. Pierce?
Well, there is a Massachusetts statute, chapter 71, section 16A, that reads in part, "A regional school committee may designate any one of its members for the purpose of signing payroll warrants and accounts payable warrants to allow for the release of checks. However, that the member shall make available to the board at its next meeting a record of such actions." This provision shall not, here should perk up, "This provision shall not limit the responsibility of each member of the board in the event of a non-compliance with this section." So I'm not sure, it occurs to me, we have a bi-weekly payroll, correct?
Correct.
And do we, do we pay, do we pay the remainder of the bills on a monthly basis or bi-weekly?
It is typically done once a month, but it would be a lot easier to process them on a, on a bi-weekly basis. Because we run into sometimes, like if we have balances on like an Amazon account, we can't charge anymore until we pay a bill, and we won't pay a bill until we have signed off and approval.
Mr. Taro, I know we had to come in and sign warrants this time inter-meeting because of the time in between our, our last meeting and this one.
Correct.
Were you able to obtain all the signatures that you needed?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
We did, thank you everybody for accommodating.
Do you think that that is a reasonable way to do things moving forward? Or are we looking for some sort of other proposal on how to move forward?
I would have no problem with one person being designated to sign this payroll warrant because it's, it's pretty routine. And I would, I would be a little more hesitant about one person signing kind of a 33-page list of expenditures without everybody having a chance to look at it, but that's just my personal preference.
So would we refer that to policy? Because that'd be a policy of the school committee, right? If we were deciding that.
I suppose that's true.
One person would be appointed through some mechanism, we would define the mechanism and. So do I have a motion to refer this to policy for further research?
With an effort to have a recommendation by the next meeting, I made that motion.
All right.
You're welcome, Stu.
No problem.
So I have a motion to, to, to refer this to policy?
So moved.
In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Just for clarification, the last warrant was October 1st, so I'm not sure if she's on a two-week cycle or a three-week cycle. I guess it depends what the invoice is out.
Okay.
So, so the last one was October 1st, and this was October 18th.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Next item under budget and financial matters is budget subcommittee update.
Okay, this is Gagliari's absent. I can give a report for the budget subcommittee, so we met previous to this meeting. It was our first meeting of our budget season. At the meeting, we talked about developing our report for our year end as well as our process going forward for building the budget for this coming year. It was Mr. Taro's first meeting, so we were able to identify how we were going to approach the budget season as well as a timeline on how we were going to meet. So we'll have a little bit more details around that at our next meeting. We also reviewed the management letter from our last audit. There were some items that, that we'll be addressing at future budget subcommittee meetings as well.
Fantastic. Thank you. Also, under budget subcommittee report, sub item A is approval of a three-year lease of 27 Hewlett-Packard ProBooks.
Okay, as you, I think we've, we've discussed previously, the Municipal Marginalization Act requires, before the school district can enter into a lease agreement, it requires your approval to do so. So we just want to make sure that before Mr. Levesque executes this lease of 27 laptops, I believe these are teacher laptops, I just wanted to make sure that it does have the school committee's approval for this three-year lease. Usually these, in the past, we would, these had been budgeted and we would execute them. But now that that, that act was, this aspect of that act was brought to our attention earlier this calendar year, we want to make sure that the school committee is giving authorization for us to enter into this agreement.
Just a quick question. Am I reading this invoice correctly, would be $20,000 for all 27? Or is that just for, that's not, that's, I would assume? Or is that just the, that's not, that's, I would assume that's the total cost?
The total cost of the devices, along with the, the extended service agreement, is twenty-five thousand, two dollars.
And what would the lease amount be at year-end? Do we know? Did I miss something? So, Mr. Pierce was brought to my attention as the skunk of the lawn party, that this looks more like a purchase agreement as opposed to a lease agreement.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
But it, it is... I'll check with Mr. Levesque.
Yeah.
Okay. Can we table this through the next meeting, or is it something that is timely?
I'll check with Mr. Levesque.
Okay.
Motion to table this to November?
Still moved.
Second, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item, sub item B, is two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen financial update, Mr. Tarot?
Sure. So, we did end the year in the black, which was a favorable result for expenditures, total of just about nineteen thousand dollars. And revenues came in favorably too, in excess of a hundred and fifty-one thousand. So, we had a favorable year. I know that these, there was an additional expenditures that were approved that were going to be used to be offset by the use of surplus funds. So, the net result is about fifty-six thousand dollars to the positive.
Okay. And what are you recommending we do with that fifty-six thousand?
Well, there was some discussion at the budget committee, so there may be some opportunities that we may be bringing back to the, the full board.
Perfect.
Once we, we do a little more investigation, so-
And we'll get some updates on, on that at the next meeting.
Yeah, and the discussion was to use, anything we use for these excess funds would be used for one-time expenditures and not ongoing operating expenses, so that was discussed as well.
Perfect. Any other questions or comments on this topic? Hearing none, move on to the next item, under unfinished business, item number one, strategic planning subcommittee report.
Yes.
You seem to be, all the subcommittees, this-
So, the subcommittee discussed the process that we were going to use for this year. We are exploring potential facilitators for a strategic plan, hopefully to happen in January or February of two thousand twenty. So, we will be bringing that plan, once we have a little bit more information on a facilitator, and also what the structure will look like, like for an agenda for the full committee to review. We also reviewed the goals that we currently have for, for the school committee, and we will be, we've identified the three goals. We have innovation pathways, school culture, and the strategic plan initiative itself. There are some details that we discussed at the meeting that we're going to add to this, so once we add them after this meeting, we'll provide those to you, and you'll have them at the next meeting to review and approve. Also, just as an additional follow-up on the summer retreat, where we discussed bullying and school culture, Mr. Schoonover has been in touch with the Mark Center about some opportunities that we might have in order to participate with the Mark Center, and as soon as we have more information on that, we'll bring it forth as well. So, at the next meeting, you can expect more detail on what the retreat will, on what the strategic plan format will look like, as well as facilitator and the goals.
I'm also hoping that the next meeting will have more information about the Mark Center, and how we're going to tackle the topic of bullying during this year.
Yes.
Can I add a few things right now? So, first, Dr. McCoy and I, I met with her two weeks ago. We are trying to nail down a date for a parent presentation, at which time that she would also meet with the school committee, as we had discussed over the summer. So, she could do that in one evening. The cost for, most of what the Mark Center does is free of charge, parent presentations are not one of those. There is a twelve-hundred-dollar cost for a parent presentation. So, if that is something that the school committee would like for me to proceed with, just, just let me know, and, and, you know, I'll make those arrangements. She did share with me an online tool, an needs assessment tool, for school districts to go and review their own policies and resources and curricula, so we're going to be doing that internally, and then she will be coming and then working with us, essentially going through the same process, but reviewing it with, with her and members of her team, giving us some insight, as well as if there are any improvements that we need to make. And it's more on the Somerset side, but we are also, Ms. Nassif we know here is a train the trainer through the Mark Center, as I think we have another staff member here as well, but we are also expanding that in our Somerset Public Schools too. So, we have trainers in every building to provide ongoing professional development for teachers. So, I don't know regarding the, the parent presentation, twelve-hundred dollars, if that is something that the school committee wants me to proceed, making those arrangements with the Mark Center.
Can I ask, when we bring in wellness, for Wellness Night that the, all the athletes have to attend, do we pay speakers for them?
Some, yes, not all of them.
Because I'd be curious, because I know that, having been a parent and have gone to many a Wellness Night, yes, this, I know this is for parents too, and we don't want to just isolate one group, we want to make it something that's, you know, accessible. But I think that there might be an opportunity there with an audience, but also too, I know we had, we had success, well, I found the parent academies to be extremely helpful when we had speakers come in, and they talked about social media, or they talked about, I think, did they talk about vaping, or that might have been a Wellness Night?
Wellness Night, had a vaping talk, yes.
But I do think that it's a great benefit to our community to provide these types of speaking opportunities that parents can come to. And I know that we didn't get fantastic response at the parent, and that's only why I say Wellness Night, because it's mandatory.
Right.
And I hate to say that, but, but being in that captive audience, you know, you have them there. But I would be interested in exploring it. I think that bullying is extremely important, and I know as a parent, if I can have somebody who's done some research and has some tools on how to talk about it with my child, or, you know, notice the signs, I think it's twelve-hundred dollars well spent, but that's just, and I would also open it up to K eight parents.
We didn't, we didn't specifically address it at the, at the meeting, the goals of strategic planning, but we talked about a timeframe of November, December, and I'm wondering when the winter Wellness Night is, and if we could schedule the speaker that night and invite all parents, that at least we would know that we had a nucleus of parents who were there, because presentation is mandatory, so.
So, I've already, I've asked Dr. McCoy if she is available, I'm not sure if we want to wait until March. Our December evening is already booked. The, the topic is going to be on domestic violence and dating violence. So, that is going to be, you know, something else that we thought was, was pertinent to the high school. That's the December speaker. It only leaves March, we don't know if we want to wait until March to do it, or if we want something sooner.
We can't reschedule, we can't reschedule the domestic violence presentation. My reaction, my thought is that the bullying presentation might very well be more relevant to a sports Wellness Night than domestic violence, but that's just my, my thought.
I think they're both relevant.
Well, I realize that, but-
Since we're on this topic, can I ask a question? How do we, because I, I know what Steph's saying about the Wellness Night, and if you're three sports, not star, you're playing, go to three of those things during the course of a year, right? How do we target the students and the parents whose children are not involved in anything? To me, those are the ones we want to target also, because they don't have any exposure to wellness during the course of the year. That would be my question.
Right, so at a Wellness Night, we have, we have the most captive audience that we can, that we have. The, the formula center is, is packed with, with students and with parents. We have five hundred-plus people listening to the presentation. But you're right, it automatically excludes about two-thirds of our population. I think we, we usually have maybe three hundred or so athletes participating in the spring. So, yes, it-
I wish it was some-
We have a lot more, whereas if we had on a, on a regular night, everyone is able to come, but yet, we probably have fifty or seventy-five people in the audience, rather than the five hundred. So, it, it is, it's one of those things, we could offer it to, we can make sure any parent who wants to come to any of our Wellness Nights, they're invited to be there. But it is, it is a well-attended event, and usually, we have parents even standing in the aisles, because they find it difficult to get a seat, excuse me.
There's no requirement, though, that any presentation obtained by the Mark Center needs to be on any night where we have a wellness event, right?
No.
So-
No, it's, it's just trying to target as many people as we can.
And it may be sensible, you know, given the importance of this particular topic and our focus on it as one of our goals this year, that we, you know, if it's not possible to have the two dates coincide, that we still, you know, offer this, because I do agree with Mrs. Field, I think that anytime you get a chance to, to have an expert in any one area come in and, you know, provide guidance and thoughts on an important topic like this one, you want to avail yourself of it. As long as we can find the money within the budget, it seems like a sensible presentation to sponsor.
And, you know, one of the things, obviously, Mrs. Field said also invite the K eight involved, but I, I actually would, you know, recommend that we even open it to our, you know, Berkeley residents, and also even maybe even our Swansea residents, you know, really put it out there, promote it well, because I think it's not just, it's, it's a great way to spend twelve-hundred dollars. I think we should just really, exactly as a parent, I would want to, I would want to know. If I heard it was a speaker like this in Providence, I probably would drive it out to Providence if it was open to the public. So, I would really encourage, make it a community event, not only just a Somerset community, but a broad area event, because it's something that we think of all of our-
I like that idea, I think that that's a great idea, and invite our, the, the neighboring communities.
So, I think we, we're looking for a motion to engage the Mark Center to, to find a, a date and time. Still moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there anything else under strategic planning subcommittee?
No, I just wanted to add, relative to that last discussion, and I was trying to find the date here, I can't... I do have it, all right. On Wednesday, November thirteenth, we are going to be hosting, as I mentioned earlier, Screenagers, that documentary, that our students from the high school and the middle school are actually in. We're going to be hosting that on Wednesday, November thirteenth. And we are, as I mentioned earlier, I will be sending out invitations to other superintendents, just to make them aware, so if they want to get the word out to their families as well. But that was Dr. Delaney Weston, who wrote the orig, oh, who created the original documentary Screenagers, this is now Screenagers, The Next Chapter, so it has a social-emotional component to it. It's all about that digital screen time and the impact on teenagers' social and emotional abilities, I suppose.
What's, what's the time on the thirteenth?
I don't have, I don't have the time here, it's really up to us to, to book it, so we'll, I think it's about an hour and a half or so in length, I hope it's an hour and a half in length. So, we'll just have to figure out what the best window of time is, if it's six P M., six-thirty, so starting early enough, without going too late into the evening. But I'll, I'll let you know.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is building inspection summary slash summary of work orders submitted. We all have our report of items that were identified as to be addressed during our August twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen walkthrough. In addition, at the last meeting, we discussed the necessity moving forward of having a, a check sheet that each of the participants in the process complete and, and turn in. That's not something that we've done in prior years, but I think it's a worthwhile suggestion, it's something that we will look to implement as we move forward with the inspection process. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about the list of items in front of us?
First of all, thank you, it's great to see this. I'm just wondering, are there any other items that are currently a work, there, there currently is a work order or are work orders for, that was not part of the walkthrough?
So, you, that, the question was asked at the last meeting, we, we use a ticket system to put the work orders, is that's what you're referring to?
Yeah.
So, there was, the system we use, it was three hundred and thirty-seven tickets or work orders submitted in the system since inception. I'm not sure when it was implemented.
Just last year.
So, it was three hundred and thirty-seven, of that, there's ninety work orders that are open, of which twenty-two of them are thirty days old or new ones. So, there's, and then there's seventy-eight of them that are thirty days or older. So, it may require those, those seventy-eight may be related to bids or something that we may, may not be able to get to, or waiting for a contractor to get to that, so.
Is, could it be, I guess it is possible, could we get a copy of those work orders and things like, not so much the work orders, but a, a list, like on a monthly basis, just so we, because one of the things that, obviously, being involved now in the middle school project, there are things that are, that are happening even in our K eight schools that we'll be talking about at the next meeting. It would just be nice to see what the issues are. I love that, one of the things that, you know, coordinating inspection with the rep of the flooring, you know, it seems like sometimes there are warranties out there for certain things, but we're not really attacking them, you know? And I'll just use the middle school, for instance, you know, we have a roof under fifteen years old, it's leaking, we're replacing tiles, but we never went after that company or for the warranty. So, I'm just wondering, it would be nice to see a running tile. And also, one of the things that we hear a lot, you know, when we started this building, we had twelve custodians. Now, we're down to nine, I believe, or something like that? That's forty-five percent of the workforce that we lost, was that the correct measurement or something like that? So, I was just wondering, it would be nice to see how the building is kept up and things like that, so.
Is that something we can accommodate, Mr. Schoonover?
Yeah, we can, we'll get that information, I'm just thinking about the numbers that you, that you decided about the number of custodians.
I, I-
I don't, I don't think we have reduced our custodial staff by that percentage.
When we had, when, when the school was built, it was told to me that we had about twelve custodians on staff, and now we're down to about nine.
Can we just do a little digging for the next meeting?
Yeah. Because that, you know, that's, those are very valuable numbers that, I think, and especially if it isn't nine, you know, if we have ten, or if we had eleven, and now we're down to nine, is that the right move, whatever the case? I just want to make sure that we're properly staffing this huge investment that both communities supported.
Makes sense. Any other questions or concerns on this, on this topic? Hearing none, under unfinished business, item number three is update on traffic study slash parking easement. I know that both Mr. Schoonover and Mr. Pierce are working on this, so I'm not sure who wants to take the lead.
So, everyone should have, it didn't go out, I don't think it went out in advance of the meeting, but you should have a copy of the proposal that we've received from PAR. PAR is the engineering firm that worked on the high school and did the traffic study for the high school, and you'll see the proposal, which is essentially to study the parking situation on Luther Avenue, but more importantly, on Prospect Street, I think- situation on Luther Avenue, but more importantly, on Prospect Street. I think my personal view is that it's important for us to have someone look at it from a safety perspective, to be sure that the angle parking is safe for our students, if there are any measures that we can take to make it safer, perhaps in terms of a gate along Prospect Street, the students could enter and not be walking in the street. So, also look at speed limits on Prospect Street. I think there's a possibility, there's a stop sign at the intersection of Prospect and Luther, but there's no stop line there. So, those are the kinds of issues that I would like to see us study to make sure that we're creating the safest possible situation. You'll see that the proposal is for a dollar amount, amount of $2,900, I believe.
It is.
So, I'd hope the committee would support doing this. I think it's important to get it done quickly so that when the easement is presented at the special town meeting, we will have this traffic study done and be prepared to assure people that we've looked at it from a safety perspective.
I would agree. As someone who sat on Building Committee with Mr. Pierce, when we were building it, the parking and the work that we had done was strictly around the student parking lot, and obviously, the teachers parking lot as well. Since the school has been opened, we've seen that parking has happened along the various roadways, and we had not given thought to that when this was built from a safety perspective. So, since in practice, that's happening, I think a responsible thing to do now is to have a safety assessment, if we are going to have kids parking outside or off the, supposedly off the campus.
I've parked over there a few times myself, not just for the walk, for the healthy walk, but I've parked over there a few times myself. And would there be two gates or just one gate for entrance for safety?
That would come out of the assessment.
Yeah, I assume that would be part of the assessment.
Okay. But, yeah, I do agree definitely on that.
And this is a cost we can accommodate within the budget?
I think with what Mr. Taro explained earlier, with the $56,000.
I gotta ask a question. Let's go for the people at home.
Right.
Okay, fair enough.
And looking for some of those one-time expenses.
So, I'm looking for a motion to...
I just have a quick comment. One, I totally, I totally am in support. Last week, I mean, at the last meeting, obviously, I already against it because I just don't feel we should be charging any students for parking. We all know where I stand with that. Additional, this is the thing that I'm, sometimes we, we just spoke about this topic during the MCAS study. We are actually counting on students being out, so we have enough parking. We sell extra passes, because we're actually counting on students being out of school. It kind of goes everything against what we believe. I understand students aren't going to be out, but we're actually counting on it. So, if we were just, you know, if, let's say we created 25 more spaces over there, safety is priority number one, but I would like to see that if we have 100 parking spots, those are as many passes we sell. I understand that students are going to be out, but it's very difficult for a school committee member to support selling extra passes, because students are going to be out, when I want all these students in the building. We just spoke about this, how important it is to have students in the building. But, yet, by selling extra passes, we do, we are hoping that children don't show up, so there'll be enough parking. That is the reason why I'm so against charging for parking spots. But, people have been asking me why I felt that, and I've been telling them out in the community. So, it kind of, now that the MCAS scores, it kind of contradicts what we're trying to hope for. So, that's why I have a very difficult time. If we do get extra parking spots, especially if it's safe, that's why I love this, but I have a hard, I will always vote against the student parking if we're selling more than what we currently have. So...
So, for the purpose of this, this evening, we're looking for both a motion to approve moving forward with the study. I agree with you that that's a topic that we need to take up, in addition, once the parking easement is granted. So, if we're comfortable enough with it, I think we'll vote on just this piece of it, knowing that there'll be more conversation down the line.
No, I...
Okay.
Do we have a motion already, or?
I think we have a motion.
No, I think we did. Because I asked the question first.
No.
I opened the floor, and yeah.
So, I, you know, I move that we authorize the superintendent to enter into this agreement with PAR to do the traffic study.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Unanimous.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of prior meetings. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve the open session meeting minutes for September 4th, 2019.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Unanimous.
Looking for a motion to approve the joint open session minutes of September 4th, 2019.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Unanimous.
Under, item C, joint executive session of September 4th, 2019.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Unanimous. Open session minutes of September 11th, 2019.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in the second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Unanimous.
And lastly, executive session minutes of September 11th, 2019.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in the second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Unanimous.
I am not aware of any topics not reasonably anticipated. Does anyone have any action items for future meetings?
May I just have one announcement? On Saturday, October 26th, Somerset Berkeley's going to be hosting the Third Annual Social Emotion Learning Summit. It takes place, I believe, beginning at 8:00 until about 3:30, right? And we already have, as of earlier today, 415 registrants attending this year's summit, which is significantly, we've had great turnout for the first two years, 415 is significantly higher than what we had last year. So...
So, that means for those of us who haven't signed up yet, we're going to get fewer choices.
You're going to talk to Mrs. Gagri, aren't you?
They actually, you will have to email somebody, because they, they are, she will put you on the list. Charlie Applestein is the keynote, so you should be excellent.
Fantastic.
It's going to be a great day.
Yay!
That's great news.
That's awesome.
And on another note, Victor and George beat me in the Somerset Berkeley Foundation Educational Road Race. I'm not going to run against them again.
No, well done. Well done on that, you know, for the education fund. I heard, I know you're a board member, raised over...
$20,000.
$20,000. That's just outstanding. And, and what I really, you know, it's just another supplement to help our teachers beyond our PTOs, what they're already currently doing. So, I, you know, it's just, it's great to see what you mentioned. And, and I will never run with George again because he ticked me.
And on Tuesday, November 5th, we have a full professional development day. It'll take place here. I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, the Berkeley teachers will also be joining us that day. And we're going to be kicking off the morning at roughly 8:00 with the Somerset Berkeley Education Foundation Board members handing out grants to teachers from all three school districts. That's the way we're going to kick off that day.
That's awesome.
It was excellent, yes.
Any action items for future meetings?
Still are big. If possible, well, it's not impossible, could we put something, and I might be asking the same thing with the K-8. I know that we're entering our budget season, we're going to be working on the budget. One of the things that the superintendent mentioned, that some of the percentages should be revisited on our budget. I'll just use an example. Our treasurer and HR director, I know we pay 50% out of region because of the treasurer's role, and then the remaining 50% is a split between both districts for the HR role. You know, does it make sense it be 50/50? I don't even know what it is. Or is it 65/35? Should really be based on probably teachers, staff members, something like that. But, I'm looking at the, and I, and I don't know what the right answer is, but I would love to see if we could just put it on the agendas to discuss, maybe have both chairs and vice chairs of both committees just work on something and make a recommendation along with the administration. So...
It seems something sensible that we would do during the budget process. So, that may be a little bit longer. If you're comfortable with it, it may just take a little bit longer in budget forms.
Yeah. I'm just thinking, work with both districts, find what's fair, work with the individuals, because obviously, they know best. Because I, I know I've been meeting with the superintendent once a week now with the building. You know, is he spending more time now with the K-8 because of the building project and things like that? I just think it really should be something that we look and be honest with each other, are we doing it? But, again, with Mr. Taro, does it make sense 65/35? That probably might be 50/50, things like that. So, but I think I have faith in that the leaders of our committees can work together with the officers and figure out what makes the best sense.
And just so you know, we've made significant process, progress in cloning, Mr. Schoonover, so there'll be more than...
Excellent. Wonderful. I knew that 3D printer would come handy.
Under action items, one thing I was thinking of as we were listening to Mr. Lantinski's presentation this evening on Blu-ray, Blu-ray block and the new schedule. This perspective was predominantly coming from administrative, I thought, or administration. I thought it might be, if we have this kind of ability, it might be interesting to hear our student representative provide the student perspective on how the Raiders...
I did ask her today before she left, if she could give us that student feedback. So, she said she would definitely have something for us this week.
Perfect.
She was ready to speak about that tonight, but then she had to go to senior class.
All right. So, everybody's ahead of you on that one, yeah. But, yeah, if we can do that next meeting, that'd be great. It'd be interesting to hear.
Yes.
All right. Any public input? With that, I'd like to entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation of an opening meeting. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. This is to speak specifically about Somerset Teachers Association grievance hearing, arbitration, collective bargaining agreement and negotiations. Also, executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21a2, to discuss strategy sessions in preparation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and the chair so declares, specifically to talk about the treasurer, Carolyn Mullins' contract. And pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, specifically to discuss pending litigation. We will be returning to open session. Motion to enter into executive session? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
My roll call, Mr. Pierce?
Aye.
Mrs. Field?
Aye.
Mr. Machado?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you for coming.